Good morning. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law under COVID-19 emergency declaration, notice that this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the City Planning Department conducts these meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting have the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the participants' panel for the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When you finish speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. Activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. We have provided a link to the meeting for those who participate on a particular case via our website and email. We have also received emails from those who have commented on a particular matter. Mr. Chairman, the meeting is yours.
Thank you. Mr. Bowen, I just have to stop sharing one second to make an adjustment, but you can continue.
Okay, Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Present.
Downing.
Present.
Booker.
Present.
Curry.
Paul.
Present.
Slife.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you. First is a special presentation of public art, More Alike Than Different mural. Tara, are you going to start this off?
Yes, good morning, Commission. Tara Petras, Public Art Coordinator for the City of Cleveland. The first project you're seeing is the More Alike Than Different mural, which is a collaboration between Bel Air Puritus Development Corporation and the Upside of Downs, a project to bring awareness to Down Syndrome and other similar learning, I'm sorry, there's similar conditions. It was unanimously approved by the Northwest Design Review on February 17th. With the rec, one condition was a recommendation to make an artist statement more apparent in a separate plaque or panel in the immediate vicinity of the mural. It's on a retaining wall on the north side of Puritus from West 161st to the bridge, which has been a wall that had been frequently graffiti tagged. The mural is a great way to mitigate that situation. We also did receive a letter of support from Councilman Casey in support of the project. I supported it as well. I think visually it's a great addition to the neighborhood as well as the spirit of inclusion that the mural provides. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa Miller from Bel Air Puritus to talk about the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Petras. So today I'm here to present the More Alike Than Different mural. It is a mural that was developed in the brainchild of Councilman Casey and the Upside of Downs in organizations serving those with Down Syndrome. And the mural celebrates, the mural celebrates people with developmental disabilities. It's a group that has not been celebrated in art in our city, and we are excited to have the first mural in the Bel Air Puritus neighborhood. Councilman Casey is a champion of people with developmental disabilities, and I think that having this mural as part of our community is going to enhance both visually and just the message of the mural. Of inclusion is what we want to see in our community. As Ms. Petras said, the mural is located on a retaining wall that's approximately 3,000 square feet. And the retaining wall is at the, it's located at 161st and Puritus in an area that is the entrance of the West 160th Manufacturing Industrial Parkway. This area is not visually attractive by any greenscape at all. So murals have been used in the past in this area to try to enhance the aesthetic appearance of the area, and we feel this one will have a huge impact on what the area looks like. If you can move to the next slide, please. So this just shows you the general area of where the mural will be located. So if you go to the next slide, it shows you the actual retaining wall. The next two slides, actually, so this is currently the, what the area looks like. This is the retaining wall we intend to paint. There's over 50 of these four-foot panels that wrap around the corner and go all the way to the bridge. They range from anywhere from about nine feet at the corner all the way up to approximately 16 feet at the bridge. The area is regularly graffitied. We go out there, the city goes out there several times a year to cover up all of the graffiti. We feel that this mural will be a huge deterrent for the graffiti as the other murals in the area have proven to be. You can go to the next one just for another view of the retaining wall. This would be coming from the west toward the east to see the wall. The next couple of slides are just more views of what it would look like. So this is coming under the bridge. You can see this is the bridge right by Gunning Rock Center. And here it is. Here is one mural that's directly across the street that was done several years ago through the mural My Neighborhood Project that the city used to offer, where an artist would come out and work with youth in the area to develop a mural in the city. And the kids would spend the summer painting the mural with the artist. So this is one view of the mural. This mural really, this mural represents the Four Seasons and everything that reminded the kids of the Four Seasons. So it takes you from winter all the way through fall. So I think the next slide is one more view of this mural. And then that mural on the south side of Puritus, that building is Blazer Miracle. It's the first building in the industrial parkway. And if you go to the next slide, it shows you that Blazer Miracle was inspired to have a recovery mural painted on their building the year after we did this mural on the retaining wall. Sorry, I think it might be one more. So that mural was also painted in this area a few years ago. And just last year, the next slide depicts a mural that was painted underneath the bridge by an artist with the support of a Neighborhood Connections grant. It came from the West Park Neighbors Night Group is the one, or is the group that really championed this mural and worked with the artist on painting this mural. The final, the next slide in this is just the view that you would see as you would approach the mural from the west. And then moving to the next slide is the actual mural that is proposed for this project. Garrett Weider has been chosen as the artist for this project. And this is the design that he came up with for the More Alike Than Different mural. Garrett has done another flower mural in the neighborhood. And I think what we really liked about this design is much like flowers, every one, you know, everyone is very different, but they are way more alike than they are different. And I think that this depicts that concept very well. There's another view in the next slide of what it would look like coming from around the corner and approaching from the east. The funds were raised for this, for this mural through an outreach effort to, through the Upside of Downs to several, many, actually many other different organizations that, that work with people with developmental disabilities. They have all contributed to the project financially, and they will be contributing to the project as well through their work, bringing the people that they work with and their communities out on different painting days throughout the summer to work with Garrett on painting different sections of the mural. And we want to represent each of these agencies that have joined in this effort with ourselves, Councilman Casey and the Upside of Downs by putting their logos discreetly inside the murals. But they will be very, they will be able to be seen, but it is a way of honoring all of the agencies that serve people with developmental disabilities. So if you go to the next slide, you can see as an example, we are still working on getting everyone's logos in, but as an example of how the logos are going to be placed throughout the mural. The sun is the upside of Downs logo. So it is placed amongst all of the flowers as well as the house, which represents Bel Air Puritus' logo. And the other agencies will be, that have contributed will have their logos interspersed throughout the mural as well. And the next slide is just, it's just an overview of what the entire piece will look like. Moving on to the next slide, just some of Garrett Weider's previous work in the neighborhood and throughout Cleveland. So this was done, this was a mural that was done at 44th and Bridge a few years ago. And then this is a mural that's inside the American Greetings Building and a few other smaller pieces that he has done. We are really excited for this, this mural. We're really happy that the councilman and Upside of Downs approached Bel Air Puritus with the desire to work on this mural with them and for the neighborhood. We can't wait for it to happen. We think the visual impact will be huge on this corner. The mural will, we're looking to kick off the mural on March 21st, which is World Down Syndrome Day. We are hoping that the weather holds out on that date just to have all of our partners come out and the whole project off by starting to prep the, starting to prep the wall for the actual painting of the mural just by doing the first layer, the priming, if that's the word I'm looking for, for by priming the mural on that date. And then as the weather warms up, Garrett will come out and work on finishing the mural with all of the groups that are involved. The, what will, the paint that will be used in this, we are using Luxon Concrete Masonry Primer from Sherwin-Williams, who has generously donated paint for this project. So that will be the primer that we use to prep the wall. And then we'll be using Sherwin-Williams Resilience Paint to actually paint the mural and then spraying it with a graffiti coating to maintain, to maintain the mural. Our maintenance plan for the mural is Garrett will work with us, continue to work with us throughout the longevity of this mural to see what pieces and areas need to be enhanced or touched up. And then areas that he needs to actually touch up, we will contract with him to touch up. However, he is leaving us with the leftover paint and very specific names and colors of the paints that he will be using. And Garrett has said he is very comfortable with areas that we can touch up ourselves, touching up as it, as it continues, as different things continue to arise. With regard to graffiti, we are hoping that there is no graffiti, but if there should be after the graffiti layer is on, Bel Air Puritus will be responsible for removing all of the graffiti. And I think that is, that is it.
Thank you. Commission members?
Yeah, this is Tommy. I just want to commend the, you and the rest of the community partners. I think that's a great use of canvas in that area and the engaged project that you'll be doing with Garrett. I've seen what he's done before, and I think that'll be a really nice use of the area. I like what you've done already for the community with regards to public art. So I think this will be a nice addition.
Thank you.
I move approval.
Anyone else?
I move approval. Downing.
I'll second Slife. And Councilman Casey's on, I believe, maybe for some other things too, but I wanted to just note that Casey wanted to mention something.
Councilman, would you like to say something?
Sure, thank you. This, this mural means not only a lot to myself personally, but you know, individuals with developmental disabilities do not ever get, you know, recognized in the manner that, that they should. And this project here will be the, we haven't found another one yet, so we believe that it will be the largest permanent mural dedicated to individuals with developmental disabilities. And I couldn't be more proud of the work that the Upside of Downs, Bel Air Puritus and City of Cleveland has done to allow this project to move forward. We are collaborating, we just got word yesterday from the Cleveland Browns that they're also going to be a part of the project in one way, shape, or another. But aside from that, you know, even all the smaller organizations who have donated to this and want to be a part of it surely shows a great and wonderful collaboration within the City of Cleveland for, for a population that is so underserved, it's not funny. So I appreciate the support of the Planning Commission. And Charles, this is right on the edge of both of our wards, so we'll both be able to enjoy it on a daily basis. Thank you.
Looking, looking forward to it.
Thank you, Councilman. It's a fabulous piece, and it's great that you spearheaded this large project. Thank you very much. So I'll call the question. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul. Sorry, Tommy?
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Looking forward to seeing it. Should have some kind of big ribbon cutting or barbecue.
We have a, we have the, March 21st will be the, the, I guess you want to say the grand opening of the, of the whole project, where we'll start the prep with all the organizations and the Browns and everything. So we hope to have the project completed by, on March 21st is when we're going to start it, which is World Down Syndrome Day. And we hope to have it completed by October 12th, which is Down Syndrome Day in the City of Cleveland. So it'll be a nice long project, but it'll be well worth it when it's completed. So thank you.
It's a nice long walk, too. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, everyone.
Zoning map amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is an unnumbered zoning map amendment ordinance, changing the use area height district of parcels of land north and south of Harvard Avenue.
I'm on the phone, but I'm trying to get on this on the computer. Yeah, okay.
Someone's, someone needs to mute.
I'm just trying to figure out how to get out with this.
Call the user. Please mute your phones.
That's, that's Mike Palantig. I thought so. Sounded familiar.
All right, Mike. Here we go back. South, south of, slightly west of East 71st Street and Ottawa Road and east and west of East 71st Street. Who, we're going to hear from staff first. Who's doing the staff report?
Of course, Shannon Leonard.
Shannon, I didn't see your name yet.
Good morning. I'm here.
Okay, good. Go ahead, Shannon.
Shannon Leonard, City Planning. So the next two, this one and the next one is in addition, one you all saw last fall for Harvard between East 55th and Broadway. And so these were just broken up into three parts. This was a project done by the neighborhood plan for this area as well as Councilman Dracotelli and the Sovereign Bridge CDC. We all worked in hand, hand in hand to clean up the zoning in this area. There's a lot of legacy industrial zoning and general retail designations. And the purpose is really just to align more with the citywide 2020 plan and other neighborhood plans. There's a hodgepodge of legacy zoning here, general semi-industry, general retail, and a little bit of residential. And also to ensure that the future development is consistent with the residential and retail nature of this area of Harvard and that infill development is within the neighborhood core is considerate of the nearby residential uses. Next slide, please. So the current uses here are a mix of local retail, general retail, general industry and semi-industry districts. Local retail is more your residential use, includes residential uses, your neighborhood mom and pop type restaurants or just regular restaurants, drugstores, shoe stores, et cetera. General retail is a little bit more broad than just your local retail, includes department stores, funeral parlors, car lots, gas stations, et cetera. General industry obviously is your heavy industry and semi-industry is your light industry, like your warehousing, auto repair garages, et cetera. Next slide. And so the proposal here is to change these areas that are mostly industrial zoning and general retail to two-family as well as local retail. And I'll just walk through each section for you. Next slide, please. And so the first section here is this legacy semi-industry that's south of the Daves along Harvard off of East 74th and East 76th Street. This is all residential currently, it's single and two-family. And so we're really just bringing this in line with the current land uses. As you can see from the three pictures, it's all residential. So we're really just changing this here to two-family D1 instead of semi-industry. Next slide, please. The next section here is south of Harvard along East 71st Street to Clement Avenue. Really just aligning existing uses and businesses with the neighborhood plan, but also promoting some more neighborhood-oriented infill businesses in some of these areas that are vacant. And so this is the section south of Harvard here along East 71st. We're just proposing to change this general retail to local retail D1. The height will still be 35 feet in line with some of the buildings that are already located on the street. Next slide, please. And this is slightly north of Harvard. It currently includes a former, I believe, Rite Aid as well as some other buildings. And really just changing this from general retail to local retail. That way it serves as a buffer once you get even further north and it's more residential in nature. Next slide, please. And then this other section here is the core of Harvard along this area is really just to align the zoning with some of the current structures and land uses and to ensure that the future development is consistent with the residential neighborhood character that also falls along this part of Harvard. But before you get into more of the old industrial areas along Jones. Next slide, please. And so again, here's some pictures. There's a Dave's local retail, we changed this to local retail. You'll notice there's also residential along this area and some banks and some empty storefronts. Next slide, please. And so that is the proposal here at this location, really just bringing this in line with the current and existing land uses as well as to ensure that the future development in this area is also consistent with the neighborhood residential character along this area of East 71st and Harvard. I believe the councilman is here as well as potentially the CDC to voice their support or opposition.
Thanks, Shannon. Councilman, I see you. Would you like to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and certainly thank you to Shannon and Nicole Calhoun, our planner and our staff at Sovereign Fields who've been working on this. And as Shannon mentioned, this is really clean enough to reflect what currently are the conditions there and then also setting the table for future development. Just a little side note, I have a long history over here. This is where I was born and raised. I'm still over on Ottawa in the picture of Classen Avenue, where my 94-year-old aunt is still living. We've seen a lot of change over time and as you can kind of see some of these odd mixed, I think, what's the official term? Hodgepodge of zoning. The, you had semi-industrial where Dave's Grocery Store is at now. So this is, goes a long way in cleaning this up and looking forward for support on this.
Thank you, Councilman. Is the CDC on?
I did not see that they signed on yet.
Yeah, I didn't see it either. So we're going to open up to the public now. We're going to hear from proponents, those people in favor of the zoning change, and then opponents, people against this change.
Mr. Chairman, we do have Nicole Calhoun, the neighborhood planner for this area with her hand raised.
Oh, great. Go ahead.
You're muted, Nicole.
Thank you, Maurice. Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the CDC. The CDC and the councilman took in an excellent effort in reaching out to the businesses along the areas that were, would be affected by this zoning. This is actually a wonderful, this is how we want to work, actually. We want to, we want to look forward to great development in areas that support business and also protects residents. So I just wanted to commend the councilman for his efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. So we're going to hear from proponents first. We'd ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less so we can move on to other things on our docket. So proponents, those people in favor of the zoning change, proponents?
No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Opponents, people against the zoning change. Opponents against the zoning change.
Still not seeing anyone.
Okay, I'll close the public part of the meeting. Commission members?
I move approval. Downing.
Slife.
Motion second, further discussion? Hearing none? Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. We have another unnumbered ordinance to change the use area and height districts of parcels of land west of Pennsylvania Railroad Road and north of south, north and south of Harvard Avenue between East 76th Street and the Pennsylvania Railroad Road. Shannon, you're up.
Shannon Leonard, City Planning. This is just an extension of the last rezoning you saw. So again, we're, we're moving some of the industrial zoning and general retail designations to align more with the citywide 2020 plan and other neighborhood plans, really just to consolidate these zoning districts and to ensure that the future development is consistent with the residential and retail nature of this area of Harvard. And then that future infill development within the neighborhood core is considerate of the nearby residential usage. Again, this was a team effort between us, the councilmen, the CDC, and the neighborhood planner, Nicole. Next slide, please. So the proposal here, the current uses are general retail business. Again, this is your, it does allow residential and retail uses, but your more broad uses such as gas station, used car lots, office buildings, hotels and motels, et cetera. And then general industry districts, which are your heavy, more intense industrial areas as well as semi-industry, which is your lighter warehouse, auto repair garages, garment factories, et cetera. Next slide, please. Yeah, so the proposal here is really just to change it to limited retail as well as maintaining a portion of it that's still semi-industry. A lot of the buildings in this area are no longer being used in an industrial sense. And so all the industrial uses that are currently existing that are legally permitted will be grandfathered into this rezoning. But we're really just preparing for the future here. And so this is the general overview of the area. This is the view looking east, east of Jones Road on the far top right-hand corner. This is the view looking north on East 82nd in the lower section. And then also looking northeast on Harvard. You can see that these buildings are no longer being used as they once were in the industrial nature that they once were. And really by rezoning this area to limited retail, we're just aligning some of that industrial zoning with future land use and allowing existing businesses to continue, but also preparing the future to potentially be adapted into more neighborhood maker spaces. So readapting some of these large warehouses if they are not being demolished or whatever have you. Next slide, please. And again, this is the same, we're just giving you a few more context pictures here. This is looking southeast along Jones Road on Broadway. There's a very small portion that I'll go over in the next slide that is still being used as a semi-industrial use. But the rest, then we like to change this to limited retail and again, to get it ready for future development. And then at the lower picture is the intersection of Harvard and Broadway. And as you can see, there's already some retail uses in that space. Next slide, please. And then the last part of this rezoning is really just maintaining this area here. It's currently zone general industry. We're proposing it to keep it a semi-industry. This is really just, there's legacy industrial use here. These existing businesses can continue as usual, but also ensuring that the future development needs the neighborhood. but also ensuring that the future development needs neighborhood use, these are um, longstanding um, industrial uses um, that are, tend to be pretty good neighbors at this location um, and work well within the retail and uh, residential context of this north and south of Jones Road. Next slide, please. And so overall, this is the proposal, really just to bring these industrial zoning districts to a more limited retail, to prepare for the future, um, and to also maintain some of those existing industrial businesses um, they are grandfathered on and they can move forward. Uh, any questions?
Questions, miss members? Thank you, Shannon, councilman.
Thank you, and I, I wanna apologize in advance to uh, Shannon and Nicole and Marilyn Moszynski, who have to listen to me wax nostalgic about my days growing up over here as we drove around and worked with our businesses, so um, as you can see, there's been some uh, really uh, some nice changes that have occurred over there that land at the Harvard Broadway intersection where we did land assembly for Community Assessment and Treatment Center, which opened up their new facilities there, um, which has been a real asset to our community. And then um, where Booth ends, uh, our Booth Avenue connector for our trail, which will be going down to the tow path. Um, so we've been doing some really innovative uh, reuses over here. Over there, I think the map that uh, Shannon put out there, um, outside of the one industrial site, uh, which is where the old Broadway Scrap Metal is at, where I used to work as a teenager. Um, uh, it's still there and still growing strong, um, I think this map reflects the current uses and our future plans.
Thank you, Tony, Nicole.
Thank you, nothing to report.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna open up to the public. Uh, first, we're gonna hear from proponents, those people in favor of the zoning change, and then opponents, those people against zoning change. So proponents. People in favor of the zoning change, proponents.
We have no one, Mr. Chairman.
Opponents, people against the zoning change, opponents.
Again. Nobody against, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I'm gonna close the public part of the meeting. Uh, Tony, I think everyone's too frightened to talk because this is where you grew up. They don't wanna, they don't wanna tick you off. Commission members?
I move approval, Downing.
Second, Paul.
Motion second, further discussion. Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Glad to get a tour of your neighborhood that you grew up in. Okay, uh, another unnumbered ordinance, and this is establishing a seven foot specific map setback along west side of East Ninetieth Street from Chester Avenue, extending north to the southern property line of permanent parcel number one one nine zero nine zero three six. Shannon, are you doing this one?
I am.
Go ahead, please.
All right, good morning, Shannon Leonard, City Planning. Uh, this is really um, just kind of a reactionary setback for um, a project uh, that had went through Planning Commission and went through all the design review locate um, meetings. It's the LDA inspired multifamily housing project. Um, and really uh, without putting in this map setback, uh, they would not be able to move forward to get their project, um, their permits. And so really, we just wanna help them out and offer new diverse housing typologies within this community. Um, this is heavily supported by Councilman Beshear Jones, um, and I believe also the neighborhood planner for this area, Kim Scott. Next slide, please. And so uh, this slide is really added because there's been a lot of questions about um, outside of us planning folks and architects and whatnot about setbacks, and so our code um, has residential setbacks, so you have to have front, rear, and side yard setbacks, which are basically yards in which no structures uh, or buildings may be located in uh, for all main buildings and residential districts. Um, and so what we're really specifically talking about here is a front yard setback. Uh, the general rules is it has to be fifteen percent of the average depth of the lot unless it allows two buildings uh, to the left and right of, or east and west, north or south of um, that proposed lot uh, in which new construction is uh, going in. And so I really just added this so that there'd be some context for the front yard setbacks for the public. Uh, next slide, please. The other type of setbacks we have are map setbacks, which is what we're talking about here. Again, this is just establishing a front yard that's either from the property line or from the uh, city street center line. Um, these are actually drawn on our building zone maps of the city. Um, they take precedence over all of the other setback regulations, the ones that we just talked about, and they can only be changed with legislation that, which we're talking about here at this meeting. Uh, next slide, please. And so this is the area here, there's several lots uh, north of Chester along the west side of the street um, that is being used for infill development. We would have preferred to do the setback on both sides of the street, knowing that there's another development going into, a little bit to the north and to the east. Um, however, because we don't have enough information about those projects, as well as those lots are a little bit shorter than the lots in the west, um, we're specifically focusing on just this project. Next slide, please. And so the proposal here is to go from Chester up to uh, the permanent parcel number um, that you see here, it's very specific. Uh, most of those multifamily buildings on the west side have already been removed. Um, those single family and two family dwelling units are still standing. And so this is really just to allow for a buffer between the single families north of this parcel um, going forward that's not in the developer's control. Um, it's so we get a little bit more clarity of what we're gonna do with the east side of the street. It's also notable that this is the uh, borderline for the Form Based Code project is the west side of East Ninetieth Street, so this is really just a temporary fix. Next slide, please. And so as you can see here, the front setback, the proposal is a minimum of seven and a half feet currently um, to be in this location, the, next slide, please. The uh, parcel depth here is a hundred and eighty one and a half feet, so at that fifteen percent requirement, they would have needed twenty seven and a half feet. For the average front yard setback, if you go along the properties to the north and south of their properties, it ranges from twenty two point six to thirty four point two. Um, to the south, north of the development, you'll notice that the setback average is twenty two point six feet, and to the south, it's twenty six feet. And so really, without adding this seven foot specific map setback, um, they would not be able to develop based on the plans that were approved by you all a few weeks ago, as well as the design review committees. And so really, we're just uh, instituting the seven foot setback to this project to move forward and go back entirely through uh, the city planning process to be efficient. Next slide, please. And again, the proposal here is seven foot specific map setback, this will allow them to build as well as maintain a residential space, make the street more walkable and more pedestrian friendly. Um, and I believe uh, potentially the uh, architect is here, as well as the neighborhood planner, and potentially the councilman.
Okay, is the councilman on the phone? Councilman Jones? Uh, Kim, are you on?
I am here, and good morning, um, commission members. So uh, Shannon outlined very thoroughly, we are in support of the change in map setback.
We can barely hear you, Kim.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't have my microphone down. Sorry.
There you go.
Good morning, commission members.
Good morning.
As uh, Shannon outlined and um, thoroughly described, the uh, map setback is necessary for this uh, project to move forward, um, we do understand that there are several other projects um, in very close proximity that will likely need a very similar application, um, and we look forward to uh, providing that and making that request uh, in the not too distant future. So thank you very much, and we'd appreciate your support.
And then the architect, is it Dominic? Is he on the phone? You see anyone, Maurice? All right, um. So we're gonna open this up to comments, proponents, those people in favor, proponents? Opponents, people against, opponents? Maurice, anyone?
No, there's nobody.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public part of this meeting, um, commission members?
Approval, Downing.
Second, slide.
Motion second, further discussion. Well, it's great to know that the project gets to move forward because of this, uh, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries, good luck. So the, the next one is to repeal a decision of the Planning Commission. And it was a proposed lot split, permanent parcel number zero zero nine two six zero one nine. The address was four five two seven Broadview Road, and I know Tony's gonna be, or the councilman's gonna be speaking to this. Um, but I'd just like to say, wh- when we made the motion and passed this, we felt we were doing the right things. It did not go to Building and Housing, and there are some problems with uh, fire separation of the two structures. And um, like we talked about during the Planning Commission meeting, this was not approving any illegal use that might have happened, and I guess the illi- illegal use was going forward, so um. Councilman Brad Vitelli?
Yeah, uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for um, having me uh, speaking this again. Um, just a quick concern that was raised was uh, by doing this lot split, you create a nonconforming use. The uh, back garage, uh, which became an automotive repair shop um, uh, was, is not a conforming use in that district. Uh, it has a history that's let, when it was transferred, there was a disclosure that its last use was a, legal use was a plumbing shop uh, with material in the back, um, it has a storefront on the front. Um, and uh, historically, it's been uh, Leonardo's Painting and Decorative, uh, Decorative Arts and uh, Craftsman Flooring Company, um, so it's, it's never been automotive in use. Um, and that's the concern, by allowing this lot split to move forward, you create a, a, two nonconforming uses, quite frankly, with a, a smaller sized lot now, a nonconforming lot, and then the back, which has no parking and no uh, uh, off street. It's uh, we, we see the number of complaints recently about cars parking on the sidewalk and and blocking the right of ways along the straightway, and uh, so at this time, we're asking for this uh, not to move forward.
Thank you. Is uh, Tom Vanover on the line? Maurice, can you, is, can you come on?
What's his name?
Tom Vanover. Chief of Lincoln.
Yeah, yeah, I do not see him.
Okay, um, he called me soon after we passed this because it came to his desk, and he also talked about fire separation and use. And uh, typically what happens, we need to make sure this happens moving forward, is it goes to Building and Housing to make sure that we're, we're not starting to look at parcels that may have fire separation problems or something like that, where we're creating problems by our uh, approval process. Um, so um, he mentioned that to me. Typically what happened is it went in front of the law first, so we would know about that, and if you guys remember, we had a, a garage that we were splitting, and that came up in our meeting, and uh, we could address it at the same time that the applicant would have to do a firewall in between the garage before they get the lot split, so um, that's what I have of this project also, so.
Hi, this is August, and, and I don't disagree with that position, but here's inherently, here's the, the issue I have. I, I, I think we're conflating two things here, right? Understand the fire separation, that fire separation exists regardless of the lot split because of flaxsimity structures, but I don't want to put my building and housing hat on, that's another conversation. So, got that. You're saying it's a nonconforming use. The lot split, in my opinion, has nothing to do with a nonconforming use, so that's what confused me, and that's what still confuses me today. So can we, can we just deal with the fire separation and that the nonconforming use is not, it's not, is, we have nothing to do with that, it has to be adjudged first. We're not that body, so I did, that's where I, I have a little bit of confusion there, thank you.
Yeah, August, I agree with you, and I think that's how it passed the first time. Um, but what Tom Vanover explained to me makes a lot of sense, and I don't know that, you know, a lot split um, making it so it was uh, a larger problem.
Although, I, I would say, with August, just from the perspective of, we've done this numerous times. It's not like we haven't done this kind of lot split all over our city, so I, I also am concerned about, you know, what August is saying is you're asking us to repeal something based on um, you know, a, a condition that we see a lot when we're splitting um, lots that might have two houses on them or garages, et cetera, so the rationale for the repeal is cloudy to me. Um, maybe we wouldn't have approved it, you know, if we had all the information, but there, there's nothing about this lot split, it's a corner lot, um, you have existing conditions, uh, you have access from two streets, I mean, we have seen this a lot.
But in, in this case, uh, you, you have two adjoining buildings that are, that don't meet code. These buildings are brought up against each other.
But they're existing, meaning they don't meet code right now. It, I mean, August's point is that it has nothing to do with the lot split, but they don't meet code, meaning that they're existing, it's not like this is new construction or they are, they're existing there, so all that can happen now is that they could be sold independently. Correct? Meaning they were.
You have two owners, now you have two owners that have two buildings that don't meet code, so coordination between the two buildings is um, negated. Okay, it's like a badass.
Boy, no.
Hey, Michael. This is Rick on the homeowner.
Define this a little more, if I, if I could, I apologize for talking over the, the applicant. I've been taught as a, as an architect, that when you have buildings on, uh, two buildings on a lot, you draw an imaginary property line to figure out fire separation. And all I'm saying is, if, if you were to do that currently, there, to Lily's point, there might still be violations, I don't know that, that's not our job to figure that out. Um, so that's, that's where the confusion uh, herein lies, thank you.
Well, it, it's, thanks, August. Um, a lot of times, or mo- most of the time, before we would even see these type of lot splits, uh, building and housing would have reviewed them. This one, because of Esper retiring, went directly to us, so they never had that review.
And David, that's a, that's a critical point, David, this is not.
What's the propos- I wasn't at this meeting because I don't remember this project for some reason, but what was the proposed use of both the parcel A and parcel B? What was, what did they propose when they came in?
They, they didn't have a proposal of what the use was, we, we did say to the owner that he could not have an illegal use because that was brought up by the CDC that he was gonna use uh, nonconforming use in the building, and we weren't approving use. And that goes back to what August was saying. We made it very clear at the meeting that we weren't approving a nonconforming use, we were just approving the lot split. Freddie, you wanna weigh in on this?
Not really, to be quite honest, that's why I've been uh, grossly quiet, and I'm not, I'm not being funny. You know, I'm being very candid, you know.
No, that's okay, because I saw your picture come up in front of me, so I.
No, it was, it was. No, it was, it was clear the rationale that we use at the last planning commission. And I get so tired of like, being repetitive. We went back and forth. It was a general understanding when this came up, that the lot split had, you know, really nothing to do with the use. And I'm still of that opinion. But there, however, is individuals who feel differently. And I'm listening to you guys make the debate and ultimately come to a decision. I've had, I have my favorite. And I've just, I, I don't have anything different to say than what was stated before. What I don't want to happen, though, when we get in these scenarios, is it starts to become about process. So, the one thing that I have to go back and kinda question is with respect to the flow. Normally, it goes to building and housing first, and that narrative. To Lilian's point, we've approved these a hundred times.
Yeah, but we approved them going into knowing what building and housing said about the properties.
Yeah, and I have brought, and I have brought many of these lot splits and supported them. So, I'm very aware of.
Mr. Chairman, the, the property owner, I believe, has been trying to speak.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, now you're talking firewall. Now, as far as, as far as parking, I'm trying to split, I'm splitting the garage with the building. So, there will be parking with the building. And there is still additional parking behind the house for the front house. So, both proper, both parcels will still have parking. So, that's not an issue there. It's still firewall. The garage is going with the building, so it's totally separated all by itself. I did speak with the building department last week. I got a phone call, and they did tell me that it could not be used as an auto mechanic garage. Well, I've been currently, for the last four or five years, I do light maintenance, so interior remodeling for investors, and I got a couple rental houses myself. So, I use it for storage and then miscellaneous work. I also have a lift in there that I would do my own mechanics. My nephew works a full-time job. He was talking about possibly going off on his own. He asked me if he could use the lift and possibly see if a business would, would, you know, be in his future. Without signing a big lease with another company and getting it over his head, I said, yeah, go ahead. I didn't perceive it being an issue with the auto mechanic business. So, when I spoke with the inspector, he told me that I got 30 days to shut the business down. There's not a problem there. If it's not right, it's not right. But, you know, with everything being public record, I don't know, rather than appealing this, I don't know why I wouldn't have got a phone call or a letter in the mail stating, hey, you know what? We gotta meet up. We gotta talk about this, rather than making a big deal about it now. And, you know, like at our last meeting, doing the lot split should have nothing to do with what's going on in the building.
Well, and that's what we said to you. That's exactly what we said. Obviously, building and housing thought you were doing something that was non-conforming. So, that's why they gave you 30 days. And that's the phone call I got. But moreover than that, and maybe we just have to table this until we hear from Tom Vanover. Moreover than that, is what are the other, before anyone moves this thing forward, what are the fire separation problems, and are they, can they be remedied?
Well, I don't know where the.
As far as use goes, I think, as far as use goes, I think Lilian and August are exactly right. I'm of the same thought process. We're not passing anything on use on, on this lot split. But I am concerned if we don't know enough information about other things that could basically shut down both buildings, we should know about that before it moves forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I think what, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
Can we go back to the site plan? And I may have, again, I haven't seen this. The owner never came forward to the CDC or to myself. So, the site plan, I, if I'm looking at the site plan correctly now, the garage that is behind the house, and then the commercial building attached to the garage, both of those will be one parcel?
What are you doing? Yes.
So, so the comment about parking for the building, for the house, they, that, the parking behind the house is not legal parking. There's no curb cuts there. There's no, there's no aprons. That's not legal parking behind the house.
Well, there is, there is an apron there, and there's also a big tree that's sticking in the street that I've tried to have, you know, get removed. But unfortunately, people don't see it as an issue. They see the sidewalk as an issue, but the tree actually grown in the street is not an issue.
So, let's, let's be clear. That's, those aren't, those aren't legal aprons. If you look at historic pictures, that was all tree lawn that got filled illegally. That's not a legal apron.
So, here, word to the commission members now. There's probably a couple of things we can do. We can, you know, repeal this, and they can come back once they deal with building and housing. We can have building and housing, you know, just postpone it until building and housing can get on the call with us, in the meeting with us, and find out what's, what's going on. Or we can leave it sit where it is, and building and housing can do what they need to do to make them compliant. It's up to the commission members.
I mean, I do have a concern, though, that, you know, it's probably not great for the neighborhood to have these buildings in the back sit vacant, if that makes sense. So, I just wonder if there's a way to table this and see if everyone can work together and rectify this lack of apron, this situation. It's a really nice corner and could be an exceptional positive asset to, to figure out a solution here that's a win-win. It really means that. You know, I don't think it's in the best interest to, to have this legacy structure in the back be vacant and have issues either. I don't know, the councilman, if we could table this, and if everyone can meet and see if there's a win-win for everybody. The other solution is to deny this, and then to have it sit in this scenario over a long period of time. It's not good either.
So, your motion is to table?
Well, I'd like to hear from the councilman first before I.
Yeah, I, I have no, I appreciate that, Lilian. I have no issue with this being tabled. I do have an issue with people parking illegally on the sidewalk and creating reasons. So, tabling this and having the owner meet with us and the community corporation, we support.
Okay, I think we should solve this. It could, it could be really nice. I mean, I have to be honest, it's a great corner. So, I'm to the table.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, further discussion. May I suggest that you have someone from building and housing as part of the conversation? So, if there needs to be a firewall erected, or if windows need to go away, or whatever needs to happen, make it compliant happens as part of the conversation.
Yeah, I just wanna say, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna say, this is, you know, a complex, a complex little campus of stuff. You know, and it's not, you know, black and white. So, I think, you know, the suggestion that's made makes a lot of sense. You know, you got a commercial front, residential-looking home, a garage attached to another commercial building. Very, 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 very different. You know, these are the type of legacy things that we have to, we have to deal with. But it has, it can, it can, it could work, right? So, yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, and I agree with Lilian. I mean, this, this could be why you walk down the street. It's a cool little corner. There's a lot going on. Come down the street.
We have Nicole Calhoun with her hand raised.
Nicole, go ahead.
Yes, I would, for the record, like to be added to the meeting, please.
You're added to the meeting for the record. Thanks, Nicole.
And, Mr. Chairman, I will say to the actual property owner, though, you know, when you have complex situations like this, it's not a green light to do things that may be perceived as a nuisance, you know. So, there's, there comes a lot of responsibility when you are in situations where it's like this. It becomes complicated, and I think that it increases the responsibility on the property owner to make sure they're doing things in a way that is not negative, negatively impacting the community too. So, I just wanna emphasize that.
I agree with you, Freddie. And, and I would tell the property owner, by doing this right, could increase the property value of both parcels. So, if it's able to be split, you could really increase the property value of both parcels. So.
That's the reason, that's the reason I'm splitting them.
No, I get that. I get that. But doing it right and just doing it could be two different values. So, Michael, call the roll, please, and this is to table.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to another lot consolidation lot split.
Mr. Chairman? Director Collier had his hand raised again.
Yes, just really quick, Mr. Chairman. We wanna make sure that we're explicit about who's gonna call the meeting together, whether it's gonna come from the councilman's office, or is it something that we should handle as staff? So, just if we go on a record.
I think it's planning. I think staff calls it. Because that way, we can make sure everyone's included. Okay, Freddie?
Okay.
Thanks. And this is for permanent parcel number zero zero seven, zero seven, one five five. And this is at three five two five Siam Avenue. Who's here for this?
I am, Commissioner Byron Bonamici, representing Cleveland Bricks.
Go ahead, Byron.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'm here to represent. I showed you guys the project two weeks ago.
Hold on one second. So, this was tabled. We're gonna have to take it off the table. Staff, are we ready? Are you guys ready for this? Freddie? Somebody?
Mr. Chairman, we have Matt Moss.
Matt Moss, come on.
This is Matt Moss, C-Planner with the Planning Commission. I'm ready to, to testify to this, that we've reviewed it through the Housing Design Review Subcommittee and can comment on the compatibility with the neighborhood contact if the commission would like.
Remove from the table.
Second.
Motion, second, to remove from the table. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker. Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Great. So, we can move on. Go ahead, Byron. Sorry about the interruption.
It's no problem. This is just showing the parcel as is. So, you can see where it's positioned in the neighborhood. It's kind of a big corner. Just an unusual lot based on its geography. If you could go to the next slide, please. This is our site plan. I don't know if, if it's as small for you guys as it is for me. But we are trying to get three houses in there off of one existing curb cut. And as you can see there, we're going to try and add that egress that you guys wanted to see last time. That's a little clearer on the last page of this presentation. But this is the basic site plan. The only difference being on parcel C three, we've extended the porch all the way across the front of the house at the request of HD RS. If we can go to the next slide, please. This is what the house is going to look like. That is, I believe it's, and had a site plan in front of me, but it's in the southwest corner of the lot. Yeah, C three there. And it's the same model as C two. The only difference between C three and C two is, again, the porch will be all the way across the front of the house to kinda create a more appealing look from the street, from Siam Avenue itself. If you can, can go to the next slide. It's just floor plans. You can go to the next slide. That is the front parcel that is going to be the northwest parcel. This house conforms very well to the neighborhood. It's, it's got a front-facing door with the porch all the way across. It fits in very well with the rest of the neighborhood. We built similar types of models further down in the neighborhood. You can go to the next slide. Again, just floor plans. You can move on. So, this is the existing lot as it stands. There is an existing house there already that will remain. We are, it is our plan to add a single-car garage behind that house detached to kinda share in the driveway that will be created by the other three houses. Again, it's all one little motor court. You can go to the next slide. This is just a 3D rendering and the proposed setbacks. Obviously, there's a little more to the lot. There's gonna be some landscaping. We, we've, with help of HD RS, we've changed kind of the layout of the pedestrian walkway and the driveway. We've been able to decrease the amount of concrete that we'd have to pour. We're making the path sort of central to the driveway instead of next to it to kinda create a shared pedestrian automobile space to kinda make. I forget exactly the technical word, but a more pedestrian-friendly overall area instead of just, just paths to the front doors. So, if you go to the next slide, I believe it's context photos of the street. So, the left-hand side, that's directly across the street on the west side of the Japan Court intersection. That house is very similar to the ones that we're proposing here. And then, these are just various houses. On the bottom is the house next to that. And a little further down, the right-hand corner picture is Siam Avenue that I believe is facing away from Fulton. So, whatever the next cross is. I can't remember at this time. So, you can go to the next slide. Some more context going the other direction. The top right-hand corner is down Japan avenue there, and the bottom left-hand corner is the house on the northeast side of Japan and Siam. And again, that, the, and I'm sorry, the greenhouse, the bottom right-hand corner is the greenhouse facing Fulton. And so, we think these, and HD RS would agree with us that we believe these houses take into consideration all the context of the neighborhood. And we hope that, you know, that you guys agree that it would be a good project that fits in very well. So, there's one more slide, I believe. This is just more pictures of the existing lot and the houses behind the existing lot. Again, there's some back there with a little bit of unusual roof lines. But again, just more, more site context, and then one more slide. And then this one is the official proposal. Again, the walk hasn't been moved yet, but this one is the laid out by our surveyor to show the ingress egress easements requested by you guys last time. That will exist. That won't change. Um, that will exist. Uh, that won't change. Um, so we just wanted to show you that those would be there and recorded, um, if and when this lot split was approved.
Thank you Byron. Matt, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, I would just add, uh, Byron alluded to some of the work we've been doing with them through the Housing Design Review Subcommittee to approve the design of these homes. As you're aware, projects that are five units or less are reviewed by staff for designer approval. Uh, we're working, uh, like Byron mentioned, we made the recommendation to extend the porch on the house that you see at the bottom of the parcel here to, so it's visible from the street. So someone visiting the home can see the porch when they're walking down this, this, uh, this driveway. And we're working with Byron and his team to really try to dial in the design of this drive. So it's more like a, a wooner for a shared street rather than specifically delineating where people should go and cars should go. Because it's, it's a drive that's only serving a few homes. It seems like it could be a really, uh, a, a slow space for vehicles and thus a more comfortable space for pedestrians. And, and we, we, we like that, uh, this team is preserving and renovating the existing house and then adding a new house to fill in the missing frontage on this street. As you can see from the context photos, there are a lot of detached, single and two-family homes in this context that front the street. And so because this is an unusual lot for the context, uh, it seems like this split is an appropriate way to add density to the neighborhood while providing for, uh, home, adding homes that are typically found in the, in the context.
Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, the CDC representative Donna Gregonis, and then we have, uh, August Fluker.
Donna, go ahead.
Um, good morning, everyone. Um, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I'm Donna Gregonis, the Director of Neighborhood Development for Ohio City Incorporated, Tremont West Development Corporation. Um, we would like to mimic the same sentiment that, uh, Matt has expressed regarding the design. Um, but also the neighborhood block club did, um, talk about this at their most recent meeting. And they said that this presentation that Byron has, um, the orientation of the driveway, it's, um, pretty reasonable that it is creative, making one curb cuts or three households. Cause I know, um, that part of the neighborhood is concerned about the number curb cuts in that region. Um, and they also were happy that none of the garage doors were near the sidewalk. Um, and those were the main points. So, thank you.
Thank you. August, go ahead.
Thank you. I, um, this comes from experience, 21 years of experience living in a similar, um, configuration in my house at Beacon Place. Um, I appreciate the attempt to, to address pedestrian, uh, traffic. Um, I can tell you on authority, all the young kids who lived in my, my pod, I'll call it a pod. Our sons, our daughters, all learned how to ride their bikes in that private drive. And, and so it, it's important to acknowledge when we create these cords, that it's going to be used a lot of different ways. You know, kids left their toys out, you know, that's just, that became our playground. Um, so I would like to advocate in the future that we start looking at how more intentional we can be with materials. And landscaping, you know, changing, um, changing textures, changing colors to, to create and define what I believe could be a very intimate and very special court, uh, when done. So I, I just ask that we continue to strive for that, that ideal. And hopefully it's not an idea. It's, 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 it's the reality of how people live. Thank you.
Thank you, August. Commissioner members.
I move approval. Downing.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion. Call the roll please.
Mr. Chairman. We have Director Collier.
Director.
Yes, I just want to say, uh, planning commission members, uh, just remember this, um, because there's going to be other, um, parcels that exist around town that are very unique. And I hope that we are as, uh, liberal and creative, uh, as we, uh, deal with other, uh, parcels like this. You know, oftentimes we talk about, you know, press, setting precedents and things of that nature. But I, I, I'm a firm believer that, you know, when you have an urban environment and you have these very unique scenarios, that you have to be, uh, nimble and a little bit flexible. And I appreciate Mr. Fluker's, uh, uh, comments. So I just want you to, uh, go on record saying we should remember this. Uh, when we get to these other kind of anomaly areas of the city that are kind of strange in their configuration. We will, uh, look at what we're allowing. That's all.
Thank you, Director. Roll please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Motion carries. Permanent parcel number zero, zero, seven, zero, one, zero, seven, one. This is at forty-two, ten Orchard Avenue. Who's here for this?
I am Jeff Snacky. I'm actually the owner of the property. So I bought this, this, uh, this property back in two thousand and fifteen at forty-two, ten Orchard Avenue. Um, it's in the Ohio City area there. With kind of a lofty, uh, goal at the time of, uh, fixing up the, the, by the way, the parcel has a house on it that I, you know, want to be my primary residence. And it has an old church that was kind of abandoned. So, you know, this, this building was, um, just beautiful to me. And it apparently, um, it had got damaged in, uh, prior years from the, the previous owner told me when they built Orchard School of Science that is across the street there, the parishioners ended up moving out because the church got structurally damaged. There was some kind of insurance claim. And, um, at that point it, it sat vacant. And so, uh, I, I bought this house and this church with the intention of living in the house and making that my primary residence and trying to fix up the church. And I had problem with getting financing because I'm actually a, um, independent contractor in the medical field. And, um, I, for whatever reason, I, I just never was able to secure any kind of, um, financing for this job. So over the past couple of years now, I've just, you know, I, I went through this process of, uh, still wanting somebody to do something with this, this building. And I've found, I finally, you know, uh, found some people that are interested in it. And uh, so now I'm at the point where I'm trying to split the parcel and keep, I want to keep the house, but I want to sell off the, the church and, and allow a, a professional team to actually work with uh, doing this project. Cause I, I certainly can't do it, um, by myself. So, um, next slide there. And by the way, um, uh, the, the, uh, the, the plan for it is residential. It's not commercial. They were trying to put two or three units in there. So, um, the current, uh, plat, I guess that was approved in ninety-nine. It, the surveyor that I just had out there was showing me that the, the sub, it's sub-lotted into two different, uh, sublots there, but it's, it cuts right through the church building, the way it's, um, it's, it's sub-lotted there. So we'll go to the next slide there. Yeah. So this, this, um, is our proposed, um, you know, lot split. But basically, um, the new line will be between the house and the church. So if you can, um, go to the next slide, it's like a bigger picture of it zooms in. Yeah. So, um, you can see that it, the house runs on basically Orchard Avenue and West Forty-second Street. And there's also, uh, alley on the other side of the, uh, the, uh, house there. So I'm trying to split, we're trying to split the lot right down where the, the house and the, um, the church, uh, uh, come together there. And there's approximately, like he didn't, my surveyor, um, did not get that measurement, but it's somewhere around 10 feet between the two. I'll show you a picture. Um, go ahead and, uh, next slide, please. Oh, this is just a, you know, a, a view of, um, sort of how, how close it is, a drone, drone footage there of, uh, how close it is to downtown, uh, Cleveland. Next slide. So this is, I'm standing in, um, across the street, right at, uh, Orchard School, School Yard there. And this is the building. This is the building I, I really, um, you know, wanted to do something with, and I still love the building and I want to see somebody at least, uh, at least save it. But when they, when they built the school, I, we got structural damage on the building on the two corners that you see here. So the corner's on the left there and the corner to the right. It, they kind of sunk down into the ground and, and caused like a huge cracks in that, that, that wall. Uh, I can't really see him in, in this view here, but there's, they're definitely going to have to do. I've had, uh, structural engineers out there and they've explained to me what they would have to do and, um, uh, how labor intensive financially, uh, how much it costs. So, um, and to the left there, if you go to the next slide, I think it's, let's see the next slide. Yeah. So you can see the, um, uh, the house right there to the left and, and the church. I pulled back into the yard a bit further there. So you can see, um, it's a, it's like 10 feet right there, um, between the two. And to the left of the house is, is an alley. Um, that's the, uh, West or Forty-second place, I believe, uh, alley. And to the right of the church is West, um, Forty-second Street, you know, and in front of the church parallel runs, uh, Orchard Avenue right there. Um, next slide. Please. Oh, this is just some, uh, buildings when you're on West Forty-second, um, and you're looking, you know, on the sidewalk there. This is what the church looks like from, from the front. Uh, I just, I love this building. It was actually built in, I think it's eighteen sixty-eight, very old, uh, German buil- building. Alright, next slide. Okay. So this is, uh, we've been talking about weird, uh, scenarios, but the, with these lots and and, and old areas here. And this is definitely one of those. This is a driveway that goes to the garage of the, um, the house. Um, that garage is so small at this point that, um, I haven't been able to fit any of my vehicles ever in that garage. So it, it's, it's more of used, uh, is, I, you know, I put tools in there and stuff and, um, but basically I, I, I wanted to, whoever, uh, gets the, the church, I wanted to make sure that, um, uh, they have this, this area here for the church, um, this driveway. So it would kind of cut off the driveway from my, my house. Uh, next slide. Okay, this is just an aerial. You can see, you know, the church on the corner of West Forty-second Street and Orchard. Um, my house is the one right, right behind it. You can, I, and I, there's that attached one car, you know, um, garage right there. And, um, what I was considering doing, if I was able to get like my motorcycle in and out of the alley, like that's one way to do it. But I was considering, uh, like down the line in the future, if allowed to reroute and put a garage door on the alley side. Um, I see my neighbors that all kind of have, um, garage doors on the alley there, but, uh, that was just one idea I, I had. But I, I've rolled my motorcycle up and down that in between the church and the house for a long time. So could also just do it that way, I guess. Um, uh, next slide. Oh, and this is just an aerial of basically how close it is to the Orchard School that was, um, uh, built. I don't know what year that was built, but, um, I guess from what my neighbors told me, the, the neighborhood kind of shook. And, you know, the house had a bit of, my house had a bit of damage. The church had definite damage and, um, my neighbor's houses got structural damage too during that period. I don't, I don't know how true that is because that was before I, I'd lived in the neighborhood. But I do know, uh, these old buildings have, have some damage. Um, but, but, uh, next slide I believe is just another aerial of, yeah, of the neighborhood there. And, uh, the, the church basically, um, how close it is to Orchard School. I think that, uh, I think that's it there. So I'm, I'm once again just trying to, uh, do a lot split right in the middle there.
Thank you. Is, is neighborhood planner on the phone? Is this?
Yes, I believe this is Matt Moss, correct?
Yeah, okay.
This is Adam, Matt. And he is here.
Matt, have you reviewed this?
Mr. Chairman, I have, this is my first time seeing this presentation, but I have spoken about this with the local development corporation. And I think, uh, the applicant's been in touch with them. Uh, this split seems reasonable to me. Uh, though it sounds like the applicant is looking to provide five feet of space on either side for, uh, of this, of this dividing line. Our, our interior side yard minimum in the code is three feet. So that would be sufficient for the house. Also, the presence of the alley, as the applicant said, would allow this home in the future, the house to the, to the left of this image, uh, they could have a garage on, off of the alley, which is great. We always encourage the, the use of alleys for vehicular access. Uh, so it sounds like, uh, that drive wouldn't be necessary. And, and in fact, you know, in, in the future, depending upon, um, the development plan for the church itself, it could, uh, open up more on-street parking too, if that drive is no longer necessary. So I mean, overall, this seems like a, like a, a great step forward in order to, uh, move this project forward. Um, it's, I know it can be challenging, financially to, to invest in these old buildings and these old churches. And it seems like this is a reasonable request in order to, to separate these two. It sounds like they were improperly or perhaps mistakenly, um, consolidated in the first place. So this seems like a totally reasonable request to me.
And Mr. Chairman, we have Donna Gregonis again.
Oh, great. I was just gonna ask if Donna was still on.
And then, and then August Fluker.
Okay, Donna.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman again and members of the commission. Uh, again, Donna Gregonis is the Neighborhood Director of Development for Ohio City Incorporated Tremont West. Um, and we agree with planning's recommendation to the commission to move forward with the lot split as presented. It seems reasonable. Um, although this is our first time seeing it, it does seem reasonable. So, thank you.
Thank you. August, go ahead.
Alright, we have a conundrum.
I know, I know what you're gonna say.
The house is fine, but you just, according to how we were just educated on the previous lot split, um, the encumbrance now is on the church.
Yeah.
Okay, so. I think we need to table this to make sure that they can actually do this based on what happens, what could potentially impact the church.
So, so, um, has this gone to building and housing? Matt?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Chairman. I don't believe the applicant submitted any building permit applications, but, uh, I think he can speak to that now.
See, the, the, the difference is when, when Esper got anything in, he'd bring it over to them. And it sounds like that's not happening right now.
So, considering the fact.
I mean, we, we get these all the time, this sentence. It's not our.
But Lillian, it is a building department issue.
Well then, but we move it and they review it. I mean.
Okay, whatever. So.
Yeah, but so now we have something, it, it, before it was just being done routinely. And it was transparent to us. And what's become obvious to me is it's not being done that way routinely anymore because Esper retired.
Because, um, well, I mean, I just, then the city planning staff needs to do a much better job of deciding what to put on the agenda. So we don't waste because that's my other scenario, which is we cannot that to manage this agenda and put things on here when they're ready to be on. Cause it's not fair to these applicants.
Mr. Chairman, we have Matt Moss.
Matt Moss, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure I understand Mr. Fluker's concern entirely. If the concern is that, uh, this building, the church, if it were renovated for residential use would, if it would meet the fire code. And one reason why, uh, several, about a year ago, we updated our, our zoning setback requirements is because when that code was originally adopted, we didn't have a fire code. And so we modernized the setback code to more closely align with, uh, the, the now Ohio Building Code and the Fire Code. So if this building were to be, if someone were to purchase this. So if this building were to be, if someone were to purchase this building, I think like the applicant suggested, he's, he's negotiating and they were to submit permits for the building to be renovated for residential use, it would go through a building code review and a fire department review to make sure that whatever work is being done is going to su- to, to sufficiently rate and, and provide the necessary safety improvements. So I don't think that.
The condition, you're creating the condition.
I think the condition already exists though. I mean, the houses are where they are.
Mr. Moss, you don't want to debate me about building code. I've been doing this for 35 years. All right? So you're putting an encumbrance on this church that doesn't exist currently, whether, because you're adding a property line. So in the building code's eyes, it's a problem. Period. There's nothing to debate about it. Somebody needs to determine whether or not you, there's a wall that, at that church that could deal with the, the less, five feet or less, because then there's a, a rating requirement put on that, put on that church. Period, man. I, if you want to sit here and debate the code, I'll have one of my staff bring me the code and I'll read it to you.
Now, we don't need to do that, August, but thank you very much. So.
We have Director Collier, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Freddie.
Yes, um, yeah, um, I've heard very clearly, uh, what has been stated. Um, and I think the path forward, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can suggest, uh, is that, uh, we do table this. I do agree, uh, with what's been stated that it is not fair, uh, to the applicant. And I think that, uh, we need to have a conversation with building and housing, uh, to make sure that, that analysis is done before the, uh, lot determination, uh, the lot split determination is made. That should be the path forward, uh, from now on. And, uh, as a staff, we'll make sure that that, that, uh, occurs.
Okay, thanks Freddie. So, but I think we need to make this one for a date certain. So could we do?
Motion to table for a date certain two weeks.
And I'll second Downing.
Motion second, further discussion.
Also is that if there's no issue with building and housing, I'm in favor of this. So I want to say that to the applicant. Uh, I think this makes a lot of sense. So if everything is okay and you can come back to us, I believe this makes logical sense. Thank you.
I agree. I just want to say, Mr. Moss, you create an encumbrance that someone buys this property and if they're not aware of what that encumbrance is, that could be an issue because it's not disclosed. So from a legal standpoint, we need to understand what that means. So when they sell this property, they know what that encumbrance might be. So I, I just wanted to be very clear there. Thank you.
No, I think you're exactly right, August. I think you're exactly right. Okay, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck, see you in two weeks. Mandatory referral ordinance number seven two dash two zero two one. Uh, this is to supplement the codified ordinance of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen seventy-six by amending sections two one five dash zero one, two one five dash zero three, two one five dash zero four, two one five dash zero six, two one five dash zero seven, three two five point five one, three two five point seven two, three two seven point zero two, three three seven point zero two, and three three seven point two five one. As amended by various ordinance relating to transient resident buildings, lodging, housing, and limited lodging in a residential district. Who's here for this one?
We have Councilman Slife.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, I hate to do this after you did such a magnificent job of, uh, reading off all the sections of the code. Uh, but Councilman, uh, Bragan Tally and McCormick requesting that this be tabled again. It's, um, my understanding is that they're in active conversations with the administration on this piece of legislation and they, they'd just like to wrap up some more of those, uh, conversations before this moves forward in the legislative process. Uh, so I don't have a deep certainty when it would be coming back, but at this time that we could, I believe it's, uh, been tabled if we could, uh, maintain it on the table.
Okay, no, that sounds good. Can I make a suggestion while you're talking about it?
Yes.
Really, with Airbnbs and, um, some properties that aren't well, uh, managed, should I say? And then, um, I'm thinking there's a, there's a number of people that have Airbnbs that rent out a room or rent out a, a back house or rent out, and they live on the property. I think to encumber residents of the city of Cleveland that are just trying to make a little extra money is not a good idea. The, the person that and, and has thirty of these around the city of Cleveland and, and rent them out to be, you know, frat houses. I think that is a problem. So could you take a look at that and how that may change for the, the ones that are kind of owner occupied?
I will, I will pass that comment on, uh, to, uh, all, everyone involved. I think that it's a valid point.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make a comment before this gets tabled and someone makes a motion to table?
I would agree.
Agree.
Okay, so someone make the motion, please.
Move to table.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by August and a second from Diane. Uh, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yeah.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
It's tabled. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, administrative approvals, there's only one, so take a look at it.
Move approval, Downing.
Second, Slade.
We have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
I'm gonna stand because, um, this may have to do with a property I know about.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry. Sorry, Lillian.
Yes, sorry.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We're going to design review now, southeast design review. This is Benedictine High School, new construction. This is for an atrium. It's the twenty-nine hundred East Boulevard. Who's here for this?
Wesley Harbor. Good morning.
Wes, are you the only one speaking to this?
I am, yes.
Okay, can you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury.
I do.
Go ahead, Wes.
Okay, uh, thanks for having me. Um, as David mentioned, we're, uh, gonna be talking about an atrium addition to Benedictine High School, which is located at the, kind of the southern corner of Buckeye and, uh, MLK, um, in the Buckeye neighborhood. Uh, the school is kind of perched on the highest point in the city. And, uh, over the years, it's, it's become a combination of both the high school and the abbey and monastery on the campus. And so it, it's really, uh, you know, aligns with their goals of education, uh, and spirituality. And so the idea of, of this, uh, this project is to visually and, and, uh, physically connect those two elements on campus. So, uh, here you see an aerial view of the campuses that currently exist. And, uh, facing, uh, one hundred and sixteenth, or excuse me, uh, MLK, which runs north to south in the middle of this image. You have the, the high school, which faces that street. You then see, um, uh, kind of a, a small connection between the, uh, main building and then the, uh, kind of the gymnasium, which has the cross in the middle of it in blue. So those two, uh, those are the two educational kind of wings of campus. And so you see that connector in the middle is basically an elevated bridge that connects the, the two second floors of those structures. And so the idea is to put a physical, uh, atrium, uh, after the removal of that skybridge, um, to, to make, uh, to, to refocus the campus, uh, and also, uh, create a, a new gateway into campus for prospective students as well as the existing students. You could see there's a parking lot kind of tucked in between the, uh, the patinaled copper, uh, in the middle and the high school itself. Um, that is primarily, uh, teachers and prospective student parking. And then to the south, to the right of the football field, you see a large parking area, which is kind of the day-to-day student parking. So this addition would, uh, exist between both of those and, and act as the main entry for the school now. Next. Uh, so here you can see, uh, just a very simplistic diagram of the work with, that we've been doing with the school over the past year. Number one, uh, you could see is the removal of the teacher and prospective student parking with the, uh, we'd be replacing that with a quad space, which is, um, basically just a brass lawn, some trees, and then an area that, uh, would be utilized for commencement ceremonies and, and other events. Number two would be the new atrium, which you can see connects those two main wings of the school. And then, uh, another thing of interest is number six, which is now, uh, right now, the, the entry on Buckeye is used only for the, uh, the monks that actually live on site, uh, at the monastery. Uh, that number six is going to be, or, or that entry is going to be reopened, uh, to welcome in, uh, prospective students, uh, from Buckeye. We're looking to, uh, you know, make a statement on Buckeye. And so we'll be back, uh, in the coming months with some signage, uh, and kind of a rethinking of that, that Buckeye entry, which is right now, just a, a barbed wired, uh, fence and, and wall component. Uh, and so the school is looking to really, you know, expand its, its, its existence to, to this neighborhood, which is of course great. Uh, next. So here is the, uh, kind of the, the main focal point of the school right now as it faces, uh, MLK. Uh, and so this entry, uh, functionally isn't the main entry anymore. And so, uh, the main entry is now towards the, uh, actually underneath the skybridge, uh, which we'll see here in a moment. Uh, and so, uh, with, with cars being such a, a key way for students to arrive here now, it's, it's taken away this street side uh, approach from entry and, and put it in the back. And so we're kind of dealing with that, uh, reality, uh, and creating kind of a new, uh, entry icon for the, uh, for the school. Next. So here, uh, I, I just want to go over very quickly, you know, just some of the, uh, over the feel of the current campus. It's, it's a, a combination of a lot of different, uh, structures, some built in the twenties, some in the fifties and, and others in the sixties and seventies. And so, um, this is the approach from Buckeye, uh, which would be, uh, which is currently underutilized. Uh, and it would, uh, in the future, be the main procession up to, uh, campus for prospective students, administrators, and visitors. Next. It's a very beautiful campus, uh, a lot of, uh, old growth trees, uh, and the architecture just kind of, uh, you know, blends in with it in this particular case. Next. Uh, these are some photos of the abbey. Um, I'm sure everybody recognizes these, these bells. It's kind of the skyline of, of the Buckeye area and Mount Pleasant. Next. Again, just, uh, you know, a lot of different, uh, architectural styles. You can see kind of the more modernist, uh, bell tower and then the, uh, more Romanesque, uh, monastery in the foreground. Next. Next. Uh, here you see the football field, home of champions, uh, is the, uh, kind of the motto of the school. The state championships they won in sports, that's, uh, very appropriate. Uh, that's the gymnasium here to the left. Next. Uh, this is the abbey, uh, which was constructed in the sixties. It's got a, a copper roof. Uh, and it is kind of an interesting, uh, counterpoint to the, uh, the other architecture on site. Next. And so here we have, uh, where you would, uh, arrive at the top of, of the procession from Buckeye. Uh, and so right now, this view is, uh, of a, a utilities building that you see here, uh, in the form, or in the middle of the, the image here. Uh, those are two overhead garage doors. And then beyond that, you can see, see the, uh, the skybridge that connects the, uh, the two wings of the, the current, uh, school. Next. Uh, here we're looking to the north from the student parking area, um, to the right, you can see the skybridge and that is the, that's the area where the atrium will be placed. Um, these structures were constructed in the forties, a lot of brick, of stone. So that's something we're both utilizing from a, a material selection standpoint, but also as a counterpoint to the, uh, the new atrium. Next. Kind of zoomed in view, um, of that skybridge. Next. And so, uh, again, we're here with, back with the map, uh, the atrium shown in blue. Next. Uh, so of course, the, uh, the procession into the atrium from the south is critical. Next. And then the view, uh, back towards the abbey is something that we wanted to respond to as well. And so we angled that northern portion of the, the atrium towards the abbey, uh, and so basically facing that after entering and exiting from the new atrium. Next. Uh, here we have, uh, the floor plans of the atrium. This would be the ground level plan. And so the, the main functions here are, uh, a new south vestibule, which would welcome students on a daily basis. And then the north vestibule, which, uh, would welcome prospective students, administrators, visitors, uh, and basically spill you out into a small, uh, landscaped and hardscaped area, uh, with views of that abbey, uh, across the way. And so it's, it's been, uh, you know, integrating this atrium into the, uh, you know, emergency egress and it's kind of the, uh, the everyday usage of the, the school itself. Next. Here we have the second floor. Uh, so this atrium would, uh, connect, uh, both wings on the second level. There's an area open to below and then, uh, kind of, uh, student pods, uh, branching off of this new walkway. Next. And so here we have, uh, you know, we're back to that view at the top of the procession from Buckeye. You can see obviously we're, uh, you know, looking to make a significant contrast to the existing, uh, structures, but we're also, uh, trying to fit in, we're using brick. We're, we're matching the exact height, uh, as you'll see in another image, uh, of the wing to the right here, um, which we think is important. Uh, but we're, you know, putting in, uh, large areas of glass to really have this visual connection between both sides of campus. In the foreground, you can see the area where commencements could take place and kind of just the, uh, the turf area of the quad. Next. Uh, here we have a zoomed in view of that northern entry. Um, you know, it's, uh, again, uh, we've got brick, but it's white. We, we wanted to really focus or refocus the campus here. We think that utilizing this, this much lighter palette does that. Um, we're looking to add a, a bit of, uh, cover to this, uh, entry area. So we have a very thin, roof component, uh, and then that matches the exact height of that wing to the east. Uh, floor to ceiling glazing will allow students that are entering from the south to view out towards this area, towards the quad and towards the abbey itself. Next. Uh, here we have, uh, kind of an orthogonal view, uh, relative to the roof overhang. You can see the entry. You can see the entry kind of behind these two gentlemen walking on the hard space. And then a small area of landscape, which we think adds a bit of, or kind of softens the experience up there. Next. Here is the view from the student entry. So again, contrasting the materiality in terms of color of the existing campus, but respecting the height, kind of being subserving in height to the eastern part of campus, but still really announcing the future of Benedictine and its main entry. Next. You can see we have a great deal of depth in this facade. This face is directly south, and so the overhang of the roof acts as a shading component to eliminate any direct sunlight into the, kind of the pod areas on the second floor and the sitting areas on the first floor. Next. Here's, this was approved last year. It wasn't deemed to be necessary to come to planning commission, but this is the new quad, which replaces basically simply asphalt in an old utility building. Next. Here's our material palette. The building itself would be the Aspen White wire-cut brick, metal panels, and then a black storefront for the glazing. The other components are from the quad and are really just there for your information. If you have a landscape plan here, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but I think it's pretty straightforward. And then exterior elevations, if you need.
This is Councilman Jones, I'm in. Ward one. Do you have that number?
So with that, I'd open it up to the councilman or the commission, any comments?
Maybe, I don't know.
I hear you, Councilman.
This is Councilman Joe Jones.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, I was just touching base. I was finding it very difficult to get passed into you guys. So I, I wanted to see if you had gotten through the program and gotten to the issues of Ward one already. That's dealing with ordinance number 100-2021.
Yeah, we did that one. I'm just trying to see if there's anything on design review for you.
Okay. Okay, great.
Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, that was the only one that I was interested in. And I'm sorry I couldn't get on there in the time period that you had allotted, but we're just now, you know, figuring this out, getting on there. And I don't know if, in the future, if you guys can make the link available for us so that we could get in there.
We will, thank you.
We just didn't have the link to link in, and we didn't have the actual number. I know that, and this is nothing bad on anyone, but just if you do send this out, make sure that we're a part of it, you know, because this is a very significant piece in our community, and we really appreciate it. I presume you've had no problems with it at past along, okay? And I'm sorry, who am I speaking with?
David Bowen.
Thank, oh, thank you, David Bowen. Really, really appreciate the work that you guys do there.
No problem. We'll make sure that you have the capabilities of coming in next time.
Oh, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And so I just wanted to say, you know, I got full, you know, I'm absolutely 100 for this.
Thank you very much.
And ladies and gentlemen, you have a great day. Do I need to stay on for any other reasons, Mr. President?
I don't think so. I'm looking at the agenda. It's now just design review, and I don't see anything in your ward right now.
Okay, thank you, sir. You all have a great rest of the day, Friday, and a super great weekend.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Commission members, questions?
We have, Director Collier had his hand raised earlier. I don't know if that was.
Director, go ahead.
He's the expert.
Yeah, I was trying not to speak because I'm obviously biased. So go Bengals, this is my high school, and this improvement definitely, definitely enhances. I remember as a student going across that bridge to get to the gymnasium, and we would have biology classes in that section of the building according to the west there. So I think it's a really great enhancement and really good to see this happening. I don't vote, so there's no conflict or anything, but I just want to endorse the improvements that are being made. The white brick, can you just talk a little bit about the departure, or relatively aggressive departure? I think it's a very sleek, you know, design, but just want to know why the white brick.
Yeah, we wanted to, the school really wanted to make an impact, and they wanted to visually refocus the school. And so, you know, we did have schemes of having a brick that more closely matched the original, but it just didn't really, you know, as you're coming up that Buckeye procession, you needed something that really grabbed your attention. And so, you know, there's nothing in this color palette at the school currently, and so we thought that was a positive. And, you know, the white brick, it is true, will be white, but the mortar will be more of a, kind of a buff beige color. So it, and that's something we're kind of tweaking as we go along here. But, you know, the mortar is basically 10% of the facade, so it may even be a little softer in the end.
Thanks, Wes. I love it. I think it's beautiful.
It's a great project. I'm of approval, and I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, I'll second it. I think it's, it is sleek. It'll bring so much vibrancy there. It's a beautiful campus.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, second further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Ocean Carries, nice to see you, Wes.
All right, you too. I'll see you in a couple minutes.
Yeah. New West Design Review, this is St. Luke's Master Plan, seeking conceptual feedback only. Who's here for this?
I think we have Lucas Reeves.
Good.
Also Jeff Raspie from Old Brooklyn CDC.
Okay, so Jeff and Lucas, raise your right hand, please. Do you sound like you're trying to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and committee members. As I mentioned, we are here this morning seeking conceptual review of our St. Luke's project. We're presenting four different development scenarios for you, all of them relating to a hundred-plus-year-old church and surrounding properties at the corner of Memphis Avenue and Pearl Road in Old Brooklyn. These sites are essentially at the main commercial district. They represent the heartbeat of residential life and business activity in our neighborhood. An OB CDC-led project here ensures community involvement and this collection of the right future development partners. Our hope is to ultimately realize impactful and transformational projects that's in line with our mission and vision for a healthy, thriving community, and thusly securing the next 100 years of activity on the site. A little bit of background in terms of OB CDC's involvement in the project and the process we've undertaken to date. The St. Luke's Church itself was abandoned by the United Church of Christ in 2014, the congregation having worshiped there for well over 100 years. The property was listed for sale in 2015. See, supported efforts wrote 2015 to seek a new user or develop upper future projects. Site challenges in building conditions made for future development challenging, and subsequently in 2016, they decided to turn off utilities in the building, causing future, or excuse me, causing further deterioration of the property. In August of 2019, OB CDC contracted through the Cuyahoga County Land Bank to accept the property as a donation. In January of 2020, the Sacred Landmarks Commission was engaged to make an assessment of the building conditions, as well as various third-party groups and engineers that we had walked through the building to make their assessment. Once we were able to get the landmark commission report back, they described the building as being in very poor condition. Based on their recommendations, OB CDC hired contractors to securitize and stabilize the building assets. In April of 2020, we engaged with our neighbors to the north and west, that's the Pearl Road United Methodist Church, to discuss their future in our neighborhood and have ongoing conversations with them. In May 2020, we engaged with Architecture Office, who's with us today, for a master planning study. In June of 2020, OB CDC, as well as the Pearl Road United Methodist Church, met with their district and conference-level officials to discuss building needs and the potential for a joint project. And OB CDC assembled a community stakeholder group consisting of residents and business members to introduce the project and our process. Once the master plan study was completed by Architecture Office in 2022, presented to the community stakeholder group, as well as the Old Brooklyn CDC Board. In December of 2020, the United Methodist Church approved the exploration of a joint project on both sites. And in January of 2021, an important note here, OB CDC was able to sign a purchase agreement for an adjacent property we called the Green Line Building, which helped to provide critical site access, locks, future development potential for all of the sites. In February of this year, we conducted a public meeting, presented the site history, our process, and various development scenarios, providing time for valuable public comments and question. Next, please. Just a little bit of historical context for you as well. In 1895, the original Pearl Road United Methodist Church was built. Unfortunately, it eventually burned down, and in 1924, a religious, educational wing that they had constructed, which is now their current home. They moved there after the fires to their original building. In 1903, St. Luke's was built, and in 1925, an additional building was added to St. Luke's on the north side. Next slide, please. Some historical photographs here. I mentioned the original Pearl Road Methodist Church burned down. At one point, it was actually replaced by a used car lot for a time. That's your image at the top right. In the bottom right, we show the original St. Luke's building along Pearl Road and Memphis Avenue. Next slide, please. Just zoning information as background. If you can move on to some of the highlights. Here, we're just showing the context of built environments around our site, part of our restoration study with Architecture Office. Key properties in the area to note in terms of overall context, Cleveland Metro Park Zoo is located nearby, Health Campus, our OB CDC Atlas Building, as well as the Cleveland Public Library's South Brooklyn branch. One thing to note here, some pretty significant built environments along Pearl Road, not a lot of green space. There is a green space that's currently to the south and north of the St. Luke's site. We use that green space for our summer farmer's market, and preserving green space as part of a future project here is a very, very important part of the future development. Next slide, please. Just some photos that show the Green Line Building, which is a rather uniquely shaped building that runs along Memphis Avenue. You see St. Luke's Church there, positioned next to the Green Line Building, as well as some of our neighbors, including the aerial pearl sensor, CVS across the road. And in the, you see that green space that has become the home to the Old Brooklyn Farmer's Market throughout the summer months. Next slide.
I'll actually take it over from here. Thank you, Lucas, very much. Just want to kind of get into the conditions of the property, then where we're going next. And again, we're seeking conceptual approval for this, for this master plan. The Sacred Landmarks Initiative of the Cleveland Restoration Society took a look at the, took a look at the property, and Lucas described their report correctly. Major concerns with the masonry, with the foundation, with the systems. The sanctuary kind of looks in some solid shape in the bottom left, but you can look to the, kind of the top of that photo, you can see major water damage underneath the bell tower, and you can kind of see that reflected in some of the masonry photos we have as well. Next slide, please. So what we're looking at for this master plan is not just the parcels we have under control, but also working jointly with our neighbors at the Pearl Road United Methodist Church. A lot of folks drive by here, walk by here, and are confused because they think there's one church, there are actually two. On the right here, which I think is easier to see, you can see that both the parcels and the adjacent green space, the St. Luke's Church is the front church right at the corner of Pearl and Memphis. To the south or to the left of it, as you're looking at this picture, is the commercial building that we have recently entered into purchase agreement. That combined with the green space, and between them is the land that we have under control. The green space to the north of it, or to the right of the St. Luke's Church, is part of the Pearl Road United Methodist Church, just where their original church was built. The building behind it, as well as the parking lot behind it, is where the Pearl Road United Methodist Church currently and actively congregates and worships, as well as they have access. So it's critical for us to work with PRUFC, as they're such a critical and wonderful partner in the neighborhood, but also frankly, anything that we would do on the land that we control would have a major impact on them, and vice versa. Next slide, please. Again, just some aerials, you can see just the size of the footprints of each building, as well as the adjacent green spaces for both the land that we have under control, as well as Pearl Road United Methodist Church is building. Next slide, please. We looked at, I like to say somewhere around 60 or 70 different iterations. We're not going to get into all these, but I wanted to show you the breadth of the research that we did, the Architecture Office did, as well as Pearl Road United Methodist Church, and on what could we do to keep, our goals were to keep a faith-worshipping institution on this corner, as it has been for 200 years. Number two, put that institution in a better financial situation. Number three, restore vitality to this corner that has largely been vacated and abandoned that has been critical to the neighborhood for too long. Next slide, please. So the first scenario that we want, that we want, that we will consider as a part of this master plan moving forward is preservation of both historic buildings. And so you can see the floor plates for the St. Luke's Church. It is not the most easily reusable building. The basement, although we note the square footage, has some major problems. There's no poured foundation, and because it's been vacant for, vacant and no utilities for five years, I've actually had staff fall through the floor because of the amount of condensation and deterioration in the basement, not to mention the mold. The sanctuary is on the southern half of the property, and then the northern half of the property was an education wing they were adding in 1925. Next slide, please. So if we were, we are able to maintain all the buildings. We are pretty able to preserve the buildings. That was really exciting news from the Sacred Landmarks Initiative. The challenge with doing that, but we will pursue it, is that it's a significant financial hurdle, because there are not many uses that could financially pay for the amount of rehabilitation that's needed for each building, not to mention the systems and the ADA upgrades that are going to be needed, particularly in the St. Luke's Church, which is somewhat, is something like an M.C. Escher painting in terms of the numbers of, number of stairs that it has. But that is the first scenario, and that is something we will pursue. Next slide, please. The second scenario that we will, will look at provides a lifeline to our neighbors to the west at the Pearl Road United Methodist Church. provides a lifeline to our neighbors to the, the west at the Pearl Road United Methodist Church and addresses the ADA, ADA issues or partially addresses the ADA issues for the St. Luke's Church by building basically an ADA elevator shaft in between the two buildings that would connect the two buildings. It's a really ingenious ADA solution. Unfortunately, it still leaves the economic challenges to OB CDC for both the Green Line Building and the St. Luke's Church. But again, that is the second scenario that we will pursue. Third, next slide, please. The third one, and Mr. Rulins, if you want to kind of slide through these, there's four or five different viewpoints that I can kind of talk through. That's fine. Would be a mixture of preservation and new construction. This would be a scenario in which we would be able to preserve the St. Luke's Church, preserve the Pearl Road Methodist Church, but likely demolish most or all of the Green Line Building and build around the rest of the corner. You can see in the, if you want to stop right there, Mr. Rulins, that's great. The, in the back, the, the Pearl Road United Methodist Church would become part of a larger development. The church would shrink its footprint into the northern half or northern 40% of its building, the part that is red, as their congregation has shrunk dramatically since 1924 when they moved into that building. They no longer need the large campus. The rest of their campus could go, could be moved into a mixture of preservation and new construction for housing of variety of income types. And then that would allow the front, that could potentially drive revenue that would allow the front spaces in the Green Line Building and the, and the St. Luke's Building to become a mixture of retailer community uses with some residential in it as well. This maintains Pearl Road Methodist Church's access to Pearl Road and sightline to Pearl Road, which is incredibly important to them, and we value that. That's a really important green space. It adds more green space that could be creatively used in a courtyard in the center of the housing development. And as I mentioned, it maintains the, the St. Luke's Church. Next slide, please. The last one would be a comprehensive redevelopment. Again, Mr. Rulins, if you want to slide through the next three or four, that's fine. This is similar in the sense that the same, the Pearl Road Methodist Church in the back would be maintained. The congregation would shrink into a smaller component of their footprint, turning over the rest of the building to a development that would largely be housing, again, to a variety of income levels. But this would be a scenario in which both of the, both the St. Luke's Church in the green and the, what we call the Green Line, the smaller commercial building, would, would be demolished and replaced with new construction buildings fronting Pearl and fronting Memphis. You're keeping a similar structure. You're increasing the massing. And frankly, it'll probably come down to a conversation of what is possible from a development perspective. This keeps a really exciting green space and courtyard again. It keeps Pearl Road Methodist Church active and connected to Pearl Road, but creates a larger development site, which, you know, would unfortunately lose some of the historic buildings, but add great vitality to the neighborhood. So next slide, Mr. Rulins, please. Oh, and one more. Thank you. Great. So where we're going over the next handful of months is that we are going to engage developers and, and keep working with Pearl Road Methodist Church to find a partner or a couple of partners who could see a vision for what we can do on this site. And we're going to pursue all four of those options that we shared with you. And we're seeking your questions, your comments, and conceptual approval for us to move forward and explore these paths for this critical corner in Old Brooklyn. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have Matt Moss from City Planning.
Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Jeff, for a great overview and presentation of what you're looking to do here. I just wanted to share with the commission what was discussed at the local design review committee. This was on our agenda for conceptual approval, but the committee felt that it would be difficult to, to make an approval motion based on the variety of options that are being explored. And so the conversation mainly focused on giving feedback for the various options, the pros and cons of each one, and what considerations they should make as this project advances. Because there are several iterations in which it could take based on further investigation of the site and the market. We did also talk about the ongoing West 25th Connects Plan, which is a, a transit oriented and bus rapid transit planning process being conducted right now with RTA and Stan Tech as the lead consultant. And one thing that we identified as a potential area for future exploration is the usage of the Metro Health Garage at the Old Brooklyn Health Center across the street. That's a very large garage, parking garage that's underutilized in terms of the total volume of parking and occupancy. And so we recommended to them, to Old Brooklyn, that, that we together explore the, the utilization of, of that garage to its fullest extent with this project and, and the future planning for this site. So the, the local committee felt prudent to just give feedback on, on each of these concepts and how they fit into with the needs and the overall planning for the area. And so that's just guidance and recommendation for you all as you discuss this. Thank you.
Yeah, and on our agenda says conceptual feedback only. Commission members.
I mean, I'll just say it's a credibly important site and set of assets. And appreciate the early presentation. I mean, obviously, this is going to require sort of what, you know, how, how this project can be financed and, and work. And so I think that point is, is important is that we can't really yet say or endorse the direction until there's a little more specificity. But of course, we want to see this preserved and enhanced. So I just want to say it's, I'm glad for the work and especially Jeff's leadership because it's just a critical project.
Thanks, Lillian.
Just, just so I'm clear, who is the current owner of St. Luke's? I, I just want to make sure that I not mix enough facts from the presentation.
Thank, thank you, Councilman Sliff. The, the current owner is the Cuyahoga County Land Bank, but we have a purchase agreement to take possession of it that we signed in January of 2020, and we are required to take possession by January of 2022.
Okay. And what, what is planned as far as stabilization? It's, you, you noted the deterioration of it. And my fear is, you know, a lot of the people on this call know me from my days working at the city of, related to the Church of Christ Scientist on Lake Avenue. And by the time I got to that project, the church was just so far gone. It was really the only conclusion that it had to be demolished. And then what, from my, my experience from that was that we lost the opportunity along the way to stabilize the structure. So I'm just wondering, I, I would hate for this to turn into that scenario and the demolition becomes the only viable option. But, but it sounds like that could be the trajectory. So I'm interested in what we're doing to kind of cut that off at the pass.
Yeah.
And it's such a beautiful building.
Again, thank you, Councilman, for the question. We have sta, we have stabilized it to the best that we can. Unfortunately, the utilities were turned off in 2016. And while the church was still trying to sell it for an unholy sum. And when it was eventually donated us to in January of 2020, that was, you know, three and a half years of no utilities. We invested, you know, well over $10,000 in stabilizing it over the last year, windows, roof. It, it is clean, it is, it is a tight, secure envelope at this point. But when you're securing an envelope that has been leaking for three and a half years, you, I can't say it's perfect.
Is it, it's not a local landmark, is it?
It is not listed.
Okay.
Um, I would, I would like to have, I have a question for Matt Moss.
Yes. I just got up, took the dog in the front yard.
There's someone.
I muted her. Go ahead, August.
Um, I would have a question for Matt or, or a recommendation. Perhaps what we should be considering here when we see this again is an, an approval of a master plan. Then, and if this is phased through, phased over time, maybe you come back with subsequent approvals. This is just a thought. What do you think, Mr., Mr. Moss?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fluker, I would agree that I think that's the trajectory it's going in. The, there are a lot of options here that the team is exploring. And I think what was, what we weren't sure about yet at the local committee level was if there, if any of these options, if the committee or, and again, if you all, the commission felt that any of these options were perhaps superior or, or inferior in terms of being compatible with the district and the overall planning goals we have, you know, for the city. Like I said, the reason why I mentioned the West 25th Connects Plan is where one key component of that plan is, is to increase density along the transit corridor in order to then support that transit investment. So, you know, that, that's an example of, of, of a planning goal we have that, that if you feel like any of these or all of these options advance that goal, I think that that's, that's useful feedback at this time. And then to your point, Mr. Fluker, that, that we would then review this for more clear approval, more, more direction, firmer direction in terms of how they should proceed. Is that helpful?
I, I think there's some information missing, though. I mean, someone's got to finance this. Someone's got to put it together. Someone's got to put construction costs to all these things. And until we know what that is, it, it makes it hard to try to steer a developer in a direction that won't happen.
Yeah, one thing, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Matt.
I was just going to say that the one thing we discussed, for example, on that, like that was a concern that came up at the local design review committee, just the amount of work that would go into any of these options, either preserving the building or even doing new construction. And again, that's why at the committee level, we discussed and recommended exploring partnering with, with Metro Health in the garage across the street because there is, there is, there is, I think, a significant amount of land behind the site that's used for local parking. And that's, that's valuable and I think would be necessary in the future to have that proximate parking. But oftentimes, we see with redevelopment projects that they can be, they can be made more financially viable when there's new construction involved, just because of the financing tools that we have available to new construction that, that make that a little easier to underwrite. And so balancing that perhaps with providing parking across the street might be a path forward in terms of making this a financially viable project.
David, I was going to say, I think two comments. One is, it's not, it's a, it's very beautiful building down along Memphis, but if losing that building would allow for something more substantial that would increase housing density in the neighborhood, that was one of the options. I, that to me, that is appealing in a sense, and I'd, I'd be interested in hearing it. I, I, you know, the other thing, then, just as one of the challenges, it seems of the site is one of the options kind of directly related to the Pearl Road UNC. And, and obviously, they're not the developer. And, you know, is, is there, whatever their capital campaign would be, would it be able to align with the timelines that are associated with the church next door and everything else? So, so there's a, to the, to the point that there's a lot of moving parts, there's certainly a lot of moving parts.
Anyone else?
No, their hands raised.
I don't know that they gave you any direction, but good luck in finding a developer.
I can, I'll try to give a little direction in that I appreciate that this is how it's being presented to us. And we're being shown that there's a multitude of options and, and, you know, some that we might not like. But I think too often around town, there's historic structures that needed to get this kind of love about 10 years, 10 years before anyone shows up. And unfortunately, that's why we end up with all these demolitions. So I'm optimistic that by taking this tack, we might be able to do the best, the, the best project for the neighborhood and for this critical.
Thank you, Councilman.
I agree. And since we have a strong CDC with strong leadership, taking initiative to lead, I think we should support them in the process and see what they've got.
Thanks, Lillian. Is that it? Well, good luck to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The next one is Emerson Townhomes New Construction. This is at 1500 Starkweather, seeking final approval. Wes, are you still on the phone? I'm, I'm guessing you're doing this.
Correct, yeah.
You were sworn in, so I won't swear you again.
Great. Thanks for having me. The Emerson Townhomes is a six-unit townhome project, basically flanking 9071 as it travels through Tremont, right at Starkweather and West 15th Street. Next. The existing site is shown at the upper left. It's currently a vacant cluster of three parcels, one of which is a City of Cleveland lot that has been in contract with the developer for a couple of years now. And that sale will be completed when we complete the design review process, which today would be the final approval for that. So the context surrounding us, to the east, we have the Pilgrim Church at 14th and Starkweather, obviously a large historic church, quite beautiful. It's more of a black tone due to the soot. Over the years, at the bottom left here, we have the existing context on the northern side of Starkweather. Couple duplexes and then another church at 14th. At bottom right, we have a view down West 15th Street, which is a very narrow street. And it's a mix of duplexes, single family, and then a large four-story community structure, which is at Howard Avenue and West 15th Street. See it at the middle right. Next. Here we have the parcel layout as it currently exists. These would be combined into a singular parcel and then split for the six for sale townhomes. Next. Here we have the proposed site plan with setbacks. This site plan was laid out so that this meets the townhouse code in every instance, which has allowed us to, you know, to easily plan for, for the development of this site. We went through the neighborhood process, which completed yesterday at Tremont West Economic Development Committee. The setbacks are pretty standard for this sort of project. We have a 20-foot driveway, which serves the two-car garages of each unit. That curb cut would be new and would meet the zoning code. And it would be 10 feet in width as it, before it's, it runs out to 15th Street. The two units that face Starkweather are roughly 1,968 square feet. And then the units facing 15th would be 1,600 square feet. Not shown in the image, but directly above us, or let's say to the west, is the freeway. So we, we've located the roof access structures to kind of block some sound in certain areas and then also allow for views to downtown to the north from each unit. Next. Here we have a landscape plan. The current tree lawn or non-existent tree lawn on Starkweather is basically just a large area of concrete currently. There's often illegal parking on that tree lawn slash sidewalk area. And so we're going to be removing that, planting grass, and then some large growth London plane trees, which are recommended for, recommended by the City of Cleveland Arbors. We don't have any telephone poles, power lines above us here. So we want to get a tree that, as it matures, can be quite large. Replacing some of the trees.
Wes, have you ever thought about doing like blood grass on a big tree line like that? So you only have to cut it once a year? Because you're not going to put your lawn chair out there and hang out.
Right. No, that's a, that's a good idea. Yeah, just something, you know, low maintenance, but looks good and, and can, you know, withstand people walking on it, the weather, plows and all that.
Yeah. All right, go ahead.
We also have some areas of plantings in the front and along the sides of the Starkweather units. And we're looking to, to add some flowering dogwoods, which are, of course, a smaller tree around the perimeter. Next. Here we have our first image looking from Starkweather towards the north. The material palette that we have here is a, a dark charcoal horizontal lap siding for the upper, upper three levels. And then at ground level, we have a vertically oriented stained black cedar. You can see we have front porches, which are respectively large for, for a townhome project. We're hoping that people utilize these. for, for a townhome project. Uh, we're hoping that people utilize these porches, uh, and, uh, you know, to, to activate that first level. Um, the color palette, again, dark. Uh, we have the Pilgrim Church down the street, which is quite dark, and then the freeway to our west, which, you know, of course emits a fair amount of pollution. And so we felt if we went with a lighter scheme, um, you know, that pollution and staining could, uh, be noticeable and that's something we want to avoid. Next. Um, in order to, at least in some form, uh, manage the, uh, the bulk of the structure, instead of doing a, a solid parapet up on top for the roof deck, we did an open railing, uh, to kind of play with the proportions of that structure. Uh, the window frames themselves would be a medium to black. Uh, you can see the verit, uh, wood siding on that first floor. To kind of, at least from a texture standpoint, break up, uh, the overall mass of the building. Next. Here we have an elevated view looking at the West 15th Street units. Um, very similar design and palette as the Starkweather units. Um, since it is a, quite a tight, uh, site, uh, we had to turn the stairs, uh, so you're entering, uh, the, the front door is actually perpendicular to the street. Um, so we do have small stoops there, which meet the zoning code. Um, but then we, we also, uh, designed vertical, uh, elements there to at least give some sort of, um, you know, privacy, I suppose, maybe not the right word, but, uh, a bit of a buffer from the street and the sidewalk. Next. Here we have a view from 15th. You can see those vertical elements at ground level, um, and the front doors to those units. Next. Here's an elevated view, um, showing the, the proximity freeway. Uh, you know, noise, pollution are a significant thing here. So we're beefing up the insulation on the western facades and using triple pan glazing, uh, on those facades as well. Next. That's another view from Starkweather. Next. Uh, you could skip through these interior renderings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the, the next one would be the material palette that we can look at. Sorry. Here we go. Uh, again, horizontally oriented lap siding, smooth finished concrete, uh, stained wood siding and, uh, dark bronze, uh, window frame, facade up lighting at Starkweather, which we think will enhance, uh, the pedestrian experience at night and then also, uh, you know, just driving by in the freeway, kind of, uh, add a little pixel light to Tremont.
Hands up.
Yeah, it's a beautiful, Wesley. I have to say.
Thank you.
Beautiful. Love the floor to ceiling windows. It's just beautiful. I do have one question though. If you could go back to the, um, rendering, uh, or the, if you go back to where we showed the, the multiple buildings, um, keep going back, uh, that one step there. So just curious if there is a little bit of a way to make sure that the first building wraps a little better around the corner? Cause even though, though it's a side, not the freeway side, I mean, the street side there, the alley side, since the other building's front that, it does feel a little like, um, uh, and I know maybe programmatically you can't, but, um, if there is just a little way to have that not feel like such a sort of backend building, if you will, that turns the corner.
Yeah, absolutely. And, uh, these renderings, uh, you caught me. The one thing that isn't completely accurate, uh, is that we do have three four-foot wide windows, uh, that are also, uh, two and a half feet tall, which would be on that, uh, east facade. Um, I went back and forth with planning, Kyle Reese, uh, yesterday, because that is built into the zoning code of the townhouse code. Yeah, so there will be windows on that face. Uh, there will be three of them. Um, they will be, uh, the, the top of them would be roughly, uh, nine feet above sidewalk and then they drop down to about seven feet. So you, you'd see light coming out at night and they break up the facade, but you wouldn't physically be able to see inside from the sidewalk.
Well, I mean, extraordinary design. So it's not a criticism. It's a, it's sort of like, um, could really make enhancements. So the question I have is in plan, could the corner wrap? Like, so could the very tall skinny windows literally wrap just a few around the corner so that it feels like a corner unit, if you will, looking towards that house? Is it, is that possible?
You think like a negative corner is what you're asking?
No, I'm just saying the windows, I wish I could show you, that are on the corner that face the front, if a few of them could turn the corner and really make that like a corner, you know, a corner glass condition, if you will, but I don't know what's there in plan if you could do that.
Yeah, the, here at the corner, it's the living room and the master bedroom above it. Um, the issue with it, um, I like the idea. Um, the issue with it is the structure. Um, these would be framed in wood. And so, um, the fact that we have so much glazing on that Starkweather face, um, kind of limits us on the corner. Now, we could add another window. Um, you, you can see that it's cantilevered at that corner. So if we did add a window in there, we'd want to push it north of, let's say, the first floor corner. Um, so yeah, it's, if we had a, a post at the corner or it was fully built out, you know, we could do that.
Anyway, just to consider it, I mean, I don't know that we require, it's a beautiful project. I have to be honest, but it would be the only thing that I think, I know without some corner units, a little stunning there, um, because the other side is the freeway. So you really don't do it, but here you might.
Yeah, take a look at it.
Okay.
I would like to point out too, I had to commend, um, Wes is always a very elegant approach. Um, I commend you to, to convince the, the owner and developer to spend a little bit more money on triple pan bet glass and, and beefing up the insulation. It makes a big difference from, from a quality of life standpoint and actually orienting the decks away from the freeway. All that's very intentional, very well done.
Thank you.
So does someone want to make a motion?
Blue approval.
Who was out of his misery?
Back to work.
I'll second that motion, um, just with consideration for that, the corner.
Okay.
I agree.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we do have Khalid from Tremont West. I don't, I wasn't sure if he wanted to make any comments.
Did he raise his hand?
No, but I was just being proactive.
Okay, Khalid, did you want to say anything?
I appreciated Maurice. Uh, so as a mess, it's been reviewed by the community. There were some concerns about, uh, contact, context along this street is, uh, as mentioned about Wes, it's a very narrow street, if you will, not alley, uh, which is prominent in several parts of Tremont. So, and we're seeing more development along alleys of, of this scale, right? And, you know, the, there's a two-foot sidewalk and things of that nature. Um, you know, if, if it was in Europe, it'd be a vernor for something like that. But, uh, the, um, you know, uh, we, we talked with Wes about different options and things of that nature. Uh, but, uh, you know, we're confident it's been voted on by the economic development committee and supported. Uh, we are still concerned about just overall process regarding, uh, town, townhouse code, which will be mentioned later in our conversations today. Um, and, um, and we're partnering with, uh, Ohio City on some of the concerns they have and based on the number of projects that, uh, they've been experiencing. We haven't had the slot houses that they've had, but, uh, as far as the wait process, uh, which in this case was required, uh, but making sure that it's, uh, that the community input is there and quality and community input. And then also the, uh, the design of the units and how they respect the current environment, uh, that they, that they're going to exist. Uh, that's it. Um, and thanks Maurice for allowing me to, to speak today.
Thank you.
I would say this for me is the, what I would have hoped would have come out of the townhouse code, a lot more of this. So just so you know, this is what we wanted right here.
Yeah. I mean, Wes, you, you do a nice job with the townhouse code. How do you find the townhouse code?
I think it's extremely useful. Um, it is a tool that developers can be confident that they know what the parameters are. Um, it, uh, we still go through the community process. Um, and, uh, I, I, I'd say it, it's, it's been, uh, a real help for us to, uh, you know, tell the developers that they can do some things and, and can't do others. And, um, I, I think the different density, uh, categories that you have is quite helpful. And, um, you know, I, I, it's, it's tough to build contextuality into a zoning code. So I, I think that's where planning commission, uh, and designer view comes in. But it's been extremely helpful and I, 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 any changes that would maybe be made, I'd be very intentional about what those are and understanding what that means.
Thank you, Wes. Appreciate it.
Wes sounds like he's in City Hall with that musical heater that Lilith is pointing out.
Sorry.
We have the same issue at City Hall.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. Further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slight.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next will be the, uh, Greater Cleveland Food Bank Facility, new construction. This is at 13815 Hoyt Road. Who's here for this?
Councilman Palentik is here. I never thought it would happen at the rate we're going today, but we're here.
If you'll give me one second, they have a, a different presentation that I need to open up and, uh, I'll get that up there in a second.
Who, who else is here besides a councilman to speak?
Uh, Robert Clem with Robert P. Madison, and I hope I still have Kathleen from, uh, Knight &amp; Stoller with me.
Okay, so everyone except for the councilman, because he was sworn in to get his position. I need to swear you in, raise your right hand.
Sorry, one other person, Dwayne Brake from the Food Bank is with us too.
Okay, so if you all raise your right hand, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
All right. Is this the right presentation?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, Dwayne, would you like to introduce the project?
Sure. Thank you, Robert. Good morning, everyone. I'm Dwayne Brake with the, with the Food Bank. And I'd just like to take a minute to share a brief background on our organization. Uh, the Greater Cleveland Food Bank has been growing and evolving for over 40 years to ensure that everyone in our communities has the nutritious food they need every day. Since before the pandemic, the Food Bank has began operating at maximum capacity to distribute food directly, as well as through our network of partner agencies. The coronavirus pandemic has heightened our community's need. Uh, more new families are turning to the Food Bank for support and others are close to needing the services of the Food Bank. Uh, this organization is uniquely positioned to continue leading the fight against hunger, but needs to expand to meet the current needs and innovate solutions to help in food insecurity in the long term. We're pursuing a transformative capital project to expand, uh, distribution of healthy food while also creating space to address the root causes of food insecurity. I just want to thank everyone for your time. And Robert, I'd like to turn it back to you.
Great, thank you, Dwayne. Um, if we go to the next slide. I'm, I'm going to start big picture and, and whittle us down into the site itself, but, uh, our site location, and you'll see these street names over and over in the presentation, Hoyt Road, East 140th and Aspen Wall. Um, if you know the history of the site, it's the old Fisher Body Plant. Um, it, it had a long history on that site. And then we are bound on the west side by the current running CSX train line. So, um, that's, that's our neighbor on the west. Relationship to where the existing food bank, we're around East 140th. The existing food bank is East 152nd and right off the highway. Uh, so it's maybe a seven-minute trip by car from one site to the other. And as you understand, the old food bank is not going away. This is in addition. This is the need that is growing in this community. Um, so we can, um, talk about the fact that, uh, there are highway exits at East 140th. Um, there is one at Eddie Road, but, um, we imagine most of the truck traffic would be East 140th or even East 150th and coming down that way. Um, our site is actually served by two dead-end roads, Aspen Wall and Hoyt Road. They both dead-end, uh, Aspen Wall at our site near the railroad tracks and Hoyt Road, uh, does not go through 90. So we have those two items on our site. Um, next slide, please. Uh, just once again, I rotated the site a little bit on you, but you can see Hoyt Road at East 140th. This is the old Fisher Body Plant. Um, where East 140th is, that's the kind of area that was taken over by the Jobs Corp facility. So they know, um, there's structures there. Uh, but the rest of the site, everything else was knocked down. Uh, it's gone through extensive remediation. Um, the land does have a no further action letter. Um, but even with that letter, we have found that, um, doing our soil borers and whatnot, um, it wasn't necessarily perfectly, um, backfilled for a new facility. So, um, there are some challenges with the site, but we're working through those. Uh, next slide, please. Um, just to get us in so that when I go back up to the, um, contextual area photographs, um, you'll understand. But Hoyt Road at the bottom, East 140th on the right, Aspen Wall at the top. Um, at the lower right, you can see the Cleveland Job Corp Center. That was built some time ago. Um, we do have a little bit of neighborhood to our east, uh, around Maxell and Topeka Ave. Uh, there is a very nice park in Topeka Park right there at the upper, um, north end of our site. Our neighbor directly to the north is Collinwood Bioenergy. This is an interesting group. Uh, they take food waste and turn it into energy. So naturally with a food bank as your neighbor, with a production kitchen and, um, some food that does not necessarily always get out and used, um, it's kind of a nice relationship between these two. Next slide, please. All right. So now you can see the context of what is there today. Um, it's been used for quite some years as, um, you know, a dump for, uh, soil, whatnot. Um, independents excavating have been using it, um, coming in and out with trucks. Um, we do have a large residential to the east of, of 140th there, uh, but the surrounding neighborhood, uh, to the west, um, is the railroad tracks and some industrial yards. Next slide, please. Just a different type of aerial view, looking back at our site, uh, Hoyt Road, which deadends, um, down there at the, uh, I-90 area, Aspen Wall to the left on this slide. Um, next slide, please. And just one more image, you know, looking back across the railroad tracks at the site to the left, you can see the Cleveland Bioenergy. It's kind of got some silo type structures. Um, and then the Job Corps to the right. Uh, next slide, please. All right. So now we're down, um, employee visitor kind of mode, coming down Hoyt Road. We just turned off East 140th. So you can see the Job Corps facility to your right. They have a chain link fence or wrought iron and some locations all around their facility. It's kind of like a little gated area. To the left-hand side, it's residential. Next slide, please. This is Hoyt Road. This would be our new entry. You can see that, um, the existing site has barbed wire fence around it, chain link barbed wire. We will be removing all of that, uh, except for along the CSX rail line. We believe that fence belongs to them. Um, Kathleen has looked at the trees and thinks they're going to be able to be saved. They do need some heavy pruning, but, um, we're very conscious of, of trying to save what trees we can along Hoyt Road. Uh, next slide. This would be our rear, um, entrance to the truck dock area. So Aspen Wall Avenue is to the right. On the left is East 137th Street. That's the street that has Topeka Park on it. Um, nice basketball courts, outdoor playground. 137th used to be used as an One Thirty Seventh used to be used as an entrance to the site. We're going to get rid of that as an entrance. So that street will no longer have truck traffic, vehicle traffic going to the site. You know, we're going to try and restore that. Some beautiful neighborhood park and want to protect it. To the right of Aspen Wall is a large electrical yard. Big transformers, a lot of industrial equipment. And then you can see the chain link fence and barbed wire that surrounds our site on the left, and that will be coming down. Next slide, please. I've rotated the site on you again. Sorry about that. North is to the right. And the slide is a little brainy, but the important thing on that is that blue dash line going through the site. That is Nine Mile Creek, an underground culvert that's existed all the way back to the Fisher Body Plant today. So that underground culvert kind of bisects our site and was very big important decision on how we placed our building. Next slide, please. Kathleen, if you're still with me.
Yes, good, good morning. This is just a very preliminary look at where we would place trees on the site. We're, if you look at the site, starting at the Coit Road entrance, we would maintain, as Robert mentioned, we'd like to maintain the existing honey locusts. And then coming in the driveway, we would, we're looking at lining the tree, the the roadway with Princeton Elms. And then coming into the parking lot, locating a series of trees along the parking lot and in the parking lot islands that would be a mixture of seedless, thornless honey locusts, Freeman maples, and some London plane trees at the outer edges. We we have some, also some opportunity for trees on the on the next parking lot to the south, where we do a similar mix of the of Japanese zelkova, Freeman eye maples, locusts. And then in the green space between the parking lot and the neighbors, we're looking at a mixture of yellow buckeye trees, river birch trees, and white and Norway spruce. Next slide, please. You can see, so the mixture of the trees at the, for the entrance drive and the main parking lot, next slide. And then this would be the, this would be some of the trees that we would use for the buffer and the other parking lot. And next slide, please. And this is some of the potential that we see for some of the other green spaces that we're looking at around the building to utilize a mixture of some native plants, as well as some plants that can provide food production, such as the service berry tree, flowering quince, high bush blueberry, boxwood, just for some greenery, and then some perennials and herbs that actually could be picked and utilized so that they can be used for production as well as a teaching tool for visitors to the site. So we see a lot of opportunity in the green spaces as something that can be eventually developed. And I'll pass it back to Robert.
All right, next slide, please. That was just her planting list, which will be developed as we go along. Next slide. I don't want to take it through too much of the building, but I want to give you a sense of what goes on at this facility. This is going to be a large warehouse facility, frozen goods, ambient goods, long series of loading docks. It will have a production kitchen where they send meals out to various agencies, whether it's a church, a retirement home, things of that nature. So it does have a production kitchen in it. It also has what's called agency pickup. These are their partners that work at those churches or food, other food distribution centers, and they will come to this facility and pick up food and take it back to their location. The facility is probably seventy-five percent warehouse and twenty-five percent office. It is going to have a hundred and fifty employees coming here into this area, into the zone every day, along with hundreds of volunteers. Food Bank relies heavily on the volunteer aspect. Probably most of us have been in that once or twice volunteering already. Next slide, please. Building sections at this point schematic, but understand it's a forty-foot tall building. It's the same height all the way around. We're going with precast concrete, which you'll see in the renderings. Panels stacked, put up vertically, so eight foot wide, forty-foot tall panels going around the building. Next slide, please. Once again, just renderings, but we have some better images coming up. Next slide, please. So the Food Bank is going to operate two facilities. They wanted them to speak to each other, not necessarily have to be the same material. But the existing Food Bank is a metal panel with a whitish brick. The metal panel is a gray kind of corrugated horizontal panel. So there was talk that these two facilities need to somewhat relate to each other. And with the decision and the timing of the project and looking at the best way to get the Food Bank in and operational quickly, we're working with Independence Construction on this project. So we're kind of settled early on with a eight-foot wide, forty-foot tall concrete panel system. We will paint and score it to help give some definition to this building. Also had some fun with some windows, some entry areas that pop out, things of that nature. If we go to the next slide. And we will come back for signage, but you know, these are just placeholder images at schematic. We're trying to present this as as a warm, inviting space. The Food Bank relies, like I said, on numerous volunteers that come to help and support. You can see the panels there up close are eight foot wide. We score them at the top to give kind of that horizontal feel that the other facility has with our corrugated metal panel. We do punch windows at the openings in the precast and some ribbon windows that, once again, the ribbon windows hearken back to what's at the existing facility. They do have ribbon windows. So trying to tie these two facilities together, but create this warm, inviting space. Next slide. Sorry, next, oh, there we go. Just a different angle. You can see some of the opportunities for plantings in the front that Kathleen was talking about. Some landscaping, interesting things that she brought up about, you know, something that is edible to plant. Next slide, please. Another component of this facility is that they do take donations. If your mom, dad, small store that has product that's going to go bad, the Food Bank will take that product. So we have a drop-off area for food donations. Next slide, please. Just around about to make it easy for food donations to happen. Next slide. The rear of the building, the north end that faces Collinwood Bioenergy, is our loading dock side. It's believed twenty-two doors. The the traffic right now anticipated, and Dwayne might correct me if I get this wrong, but their their daily run is about ten to fifteen trucks. So it's, it's, I think, I think I said that right, right, Dwayne?
That's correct.
Yeah, so and and that activity mostly happens in the morning. Next slide, please. Just a different angle. We're going around the loading dock sides, dumpsters that will face the Collinwood Bioenergy. They're even in talks about having a container on their site that would store their food waste and Collinwood Bioenergy would drive over and pick it up. So we're having those conversations right now. Next slide. This is what what I call the agency pickup. We call it partner pickup. This is the, where the church groups would come, or retirement homes, things of that nature, and would pick up their orders of food. Next slide, please. Just a corner image, once again, you're at the kind of the agency pickup side. We also have a small outdoor plaza there for right off the employee break room. So a nice little space to get out, get a retreat on the nice Cleveland days. Next slide. That might be my last slide. Sorry about that. That was it.
Yeah, that's all I've got.
I appreciate everyone's time. Dwayne, if you have anything you wanted to say at the end?
No, I think that's it. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you, guys, commission members.
We have August and Sharonda Watley as well.
Yeah, I would, thanks a lot, guys. This is, this is great. This is wonderful, obviously, for for the, for our community. Considering how many volunteers visit this this site and park and walk in, I think there should be some consideration to doing a more robust crosswalks, other than painted symbols and things. Maybe it's a material change, and maybe there more than, there's more than one. So that, so so that experience that you indicated is more pleasant and and more intentional as as people sort of move in and out of this facility. Thank you.
Sharonda, next.
Hi, everybody. Good morning. My name is Sharonda Watley. I'm the neighborhood planner. And so this project did go to design reviewers earlier this week, and so it did receive a recommendation for schematic approval. There were two comments from the design review committee. One was to potentially add maybe some side doors onto the main entrance so that it's easier for folks to get in as they are parking along the side of the building. And then also, the other comment was to potentially think about consolidating some of the parking. They were very intrigued by the idea of having growing food on the site or having some sort of food production, fresh food production. And so they thought that potentially that northernmost parking would be, parking area would be a good place to consider having additional space to grow food and herbs and things like that.
Mr. Chairman, a question to the Food Bank. I should have asked it at the beginning. Does the Cleveland Foundation have a capital grant into this project?
I'm sorry, you cut out. Could you repeat your question, Alia?
Is this to the Food Bank representatives? Do you know the Cleveland Foundation is providing a grant of capital to this project?
The Cleveland Foundation will be approached. I don't believe they've been approached as of yet, but I would have to defer and get back to you on that exact question.
Just out of abundance of passion, my preference is to stay.
Okay, thank you, Alia.
Mr. Chairman, we have Director Collier.
Director.
Yes, real quick, I just want to highlight two things because this is such a significant site and really, you know, great use and building. And I know you needed a site of scale, which this obviously provides. I almost hate that it's so tucked away, but I guess it is what it is with respect to needing acreage, that you need to do something this substantial. But two things with the tree canopy, there's a lot of area back here. Is there opportunity to maximize the whole tree canopy component a little bit more, if possible? Because I think that you have a lot of green areas on here where you can probably add some tree canopy, you know, given the fact that this is obviously an older industrial site, where you can spruce it up a little bit with respect to, you know, trees on parts of the site that have these large swaths of green spaces.
Thanks, Director. Anyone else? I'm just going to make a couple of comments on the site. I'm real familiar with the site. I'm sure you have a certified professional helping you because this to go through the VAP program. And you need to make sure that you follow the O and M plan. Because managing the soils is where you can run into trouble or additional costs. And since this was a VAP program, it'd be good to follow it from the very beginning and design to that way because it'll be cheaper in the long run. The other thing is you may want to camera the culvert because I know that it's had some compromises in the in recent past history. So you want to make sure where you're touching it or where you're going over it is lined properly so you don't have problems once you move in day one.
I guess I will move to approve with amended suggestions from from planning staff and the commission members.
I will second.
Councilman Palentik, I have a comment.
Go ahead, councilman.
Well, Mr. Chairman and board members, first of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity today. The Greater Cleveland Food Bank is very special to me personally and to our great community for the work that they have done. I've worked with them from the very beginning with their original building on South, well, the the second building because they had one originally off of East Thirty. But on the new construction with Daniel Goodman, the the president, CEO of the Food Bank, and now I've had the pleasure of working with Christian and her wonderful staff. This facility, this new Food Bank, is going to really be a transformational project for Coit Road in the East One Forty Street quarter. Site's been vacant since the, I believe, the late eighties. Fisher Body closed in eighty-four. There was some time afterwards it was demolished and there's the site at basically a dump site until the DeGirano family came in there and took the property from Forest City and then started the cleanup and grade and do all the infrastructure improvements that are needed. Obviously, this is a very big building, a hundred ninety-eight thousand square foot. And the, on eighteen acres, one thing they did not say that they're going to hire and approximately sixty individuals to work this site with the starting wage of fifteen dollars an hour. That's something that's very important to me, to our community. I can't say enough good things about the Food Bank. I have volunteered there myself. I've contributed personally to them. I put them right up there with the Salvation Army and other agencies that are working diligently. And I will tell you, everyone who's listening, when I contributed ten years ago to help with the construction award allocation, which as everyone knows is very precious and very dear to members of city council. When I donated award allocation to the site on South Waterloo Road, I would have never envisioned the demand that would be placed upon them, never, ever. With COVID nineteen, people being at work, families losing their jobs, and then volunteering myself to work at the municipal lot to pass out food, just working, one of those events would tell anyone how critical this Food Bank is to not only Cleveland, but the northeast Ohio. So I am here to support them one hundred and ten percent. I am a peer leader for the Food Bank. I can't say enough about the leadership, the staff, the board. And I'm looking forward to the construction of this new building as the community is, and then the the repurposing and and the new activities that take place at their existing site on South Waterloo Road. This is a win-win for Cleveland and the Greater Cleveland community. And I'm here to do everything I can to see this project move as quickly as it can. So I have, it has my one hundred and ten percent support. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Any other further discussion? We have a motion second. Michael, call the roll, please.
Mr. Chairman, I did not get the second.
Downing, second.
Thank you.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luker.
Yes.
Curry.
Abstention.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Looking forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, board members.
So now we have Park Place Town Homes, new construction seeking final approval. This is on West Seventy Third Street. Who's here to speak to this one?
You have Mike Marus.
Jeff Foster from Beto Architects.
Jeff, how are you?
Jeff, how are you? Um, could you please raise your right hand? You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury.
I do.
Go ahead.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you for, uh, hearing about our project today. It's been a nice long morning. We appreciate all the, uh, projects going on in Cleveland. Uh, we are here today for final approval as stated. I think the agenda had a mishap seeking, I believe it was schematic approval, but we are looking for final approval on the twenty-five units at Battery Park. We had our Far West meeting on Wednesday and received approval on the updates that was requested on the meeting two weeks ago. And today we're looking to get this final approved and move forward. So I, Jeff's gonna go through the updates that we made, which were pretty minor, and we'd like feedback.
Super. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, David. So the project is very similar to what you saw a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the, the layouts of the units, the position, the positions on the sites, the basic design. A few of the tweaks that we had from, uh, Far West Design, uh, had to do with some material placements, a little bit of articulation on the ends of some of the units, uh, and some of the placement of the landscaping. Um, Kyle and Adam have gone through the townhouse. We're also utilizing the townhouse overlay with this. And they've gone through their compliance sheet, and there's a few tweaks that we've made on the site plan as well to reflect that. Uh, so if you want to go to the next slide. From a site planning standpoint, a few of the, the tweaks that we had made, uh, was adding some fencing and some screening at the end of the drive lanes and in compliance with what the townhouse overlay is looking for. We are showing some street trees along Seventy-Third. I know there was a little bit of discussion at, uh, our last meeting with you whether those should be there or should not be there. For now, we've got them shown there, um, so that we can obviously continue that discussion farther. Next slide. Landscape plans. I'm not gonna take you through this. There's really no substantive changes for these. Next. 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 If you want to flip through till you get a pretty picture. Plans haven't really changed.
Yeah, we like pretty pictures.
Yeah, pretty pictures are better than these. These are boring, but keep going. There we go. So, uh, the only really changes that you've seen on us, we've simplified some of the color schemes along with our awnings at the front doors. Uh, we've created a little more uniformity where our units turn the corner. We've got the metal siding, uh, that's at the end of the building D that you see up towards the top of the page. We've, we've tied in the color of our flat Kronospan panels with some of them, uh, corrugated metal. Uh, other changes had to do with how we're turning the corner on our, our building D, which is in the lower right-hand corner. So we projected out the ends of those buildings just so that we have a nice clean articulation when you turn the corner. Aside from those changes, there really isn't anything else different than what you saw last time.
Commission members, questions?
I have approval. Downing.
Second, Curry.
We have a motion and second for approval. Um, further discussion. Since I have you both on the phone, Jeff and Mike, um, how have you found working with the townhouse code?
You know, it's, it's been interesting for us because we had the, uh, PUD for the last fourteen years at Battery Park. This is actually the first time at Battery Park we've actually not utilized the existing PUD that we put in place in two thousand and four. And, and I'll tell you, working with Kyle, I know he's, he's put a lot of effort and, and, and talking to people like us to, to get feedback through the process. And I mean, this is a great process. I mean, I, I think you, you've defined the, the boundaries. It makes it simple and clear to us what to design to. And I, I know Jeff, Jeff and I, when we got into the, the code for this, being that, you know, it's different than our original PUD, it, it set the table real easy for us to come up with this design. So I, I mean, I think I have nothing but positive feedback.
All right, thank you. Jeff, you got any comments?
Now, from a designer standpoint, you know, I think with the end product that you're getting out of some of these projects, I think is, is much better for the city. It's much better for the fabric. Um, I think it's a great, I think it's a great addition. I wish other cities would do it as well.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, uh, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Good luck. You're finishing up your project.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go to the townhouse code revisions, and Kyle Reese is gonna be presenting this.
I will start.
Oh, that's right.
I'm gonna be, uh, opening this up and then I'm gonna, uh, turn it over, uh, to Kyle because I want to set some context for what this is and what it isn't, um, because there may have been some misunderstanding about the nature of today's dialogue. Um, as you know, uh, the planning commission, uh, as well as other interests, uh, have want to explore uh, the townhouse code that was adopted a few years ago. Um, obviously, when we put in these regulations, uh, we are very clear about what our intentions are. Um, there are scenarios, uh, where there may be unintended consequences of certain areas or perceived, uh, issues, uh, in certain communities. And of course, as a planning department and a commission, we are very open to looking and examining those. Um, what we have been working to do, we had a meeting with the councilman McCormick, as well as Brinketelli, who's over the Development Planning and Sustainability Committee, uh, about, uh, some of what their concerns are, at least the concerns of, uh, Councilman McCormick and residents in the house community, uh, had, uh, illuminated. And then there was, uh, also a couple of process-related items, uh, that were articulated, I believe, that was to figure out a few others, uh, that we wanted to examine. So the purpose of today was really to come back to the planning commission and kind of talk to you about what that examination has yielded from a staff perspective so far and get your input on those items. Uh, the other thing that I think that you're gonna find, um, with this is, you know, um, we think and believe that the townhouse code has worked pretty well, um, in many respects. And we wanted to pinpoint exactly those tweaks, um, that we felt, uh, were necessary in order to perfect this. And I do want to emphasize that, you know, obviously, we are all in the business of making sure that these neighborhoods work um, and that they benefit the city. And, um, there's often, uh, a couple of different perspectives when it comes to what that looks like. Uh, obviously, there's the developer perspective. Um, you've heard from a few, uh, with respect to their experience with it. Um, and there's also, uh, perspective from the community side. And, uh, making sure that we have a product that is citywide in nature, um, that absorbs the overall goals and interests of the city, um, expressed as expressed by our comprehensive plan, I think is very important. So, uh, Kyle is gonna walk you through in very explicit detail, uh, what we believe those tweaks are and, uh, their benefits. And then we'll, uh, turn it back over to, uh, the commission for any, uh, comments or input or direction. Kyle?
Uh, thank you, Freddie. Um, Kyle Reese, City Planning, here, uh, to walk you through some of the proposed updates. And just to be very clear for everyone that's on the call, this is just a special presentation. Uh, there's no action that's gonna be taken on this today. It's just for conversation. So, um, I would encourage anybody that has comments to make them, uh, at the appropriate time. Um, so the goals of the update, um, we want to clarify some language and definition, uh, definitions that are, um, just things along the way. Uh, the code's been in place, uh, for about three years now, and so we've gotten some feedback on some of these things and, and we know how to clean them up. Um, we're gonna add a new definition, uh, that talks about auto courts, um, uh, specifically, uh, in, in one other definition. And then, um, I think the thing that everyone's really interested in and hearing about is, uh, the, um, some refining of the use in a, in a single or two-family district here. Um, so, uh, next slide, please. Uh, so a little bit of background on the townhouse code, uh, was adopted in August of twenty eighteen. Uh, we've had twenty-five, uh, or so projects, um, either completed or under development, um, that have come through the city planning department. Uh, and in that time and through those, uh, projects, uh, there's been zero, zero variance requested for any of them. So, uh, I don't know any other provision of the code that's gone, uh, three years without a zoning variance request, um, that, that's this common. So I think that's a testament to, to how the code works, and I really appreciate all the comments from the, um, developers and architects that have been on the call today so far. Uh, I'm glad to hear that. Um, next slide, please. So there's a little bit of background, um, about what was happening before the townhouse code. Uh, the new townhouse code was developed and implemented. Um, I'm gonna show a couple of slides here. This is not a dig at anybody who was involved in these projects. I think, uh, I think looking at them is important for us to recognize how far we've come, both in our, um, focus on walkability and creating great streets, and also, uh, what the townhouse code has done to advance those goals, um, that are in the citywide plan. So, um, this was a project that was developed under the prior townhouse code. Uh, that was originally adopted in nineteen ninety-five. This was code compliant when it was built. Uh, next slide. Um, this is another project, uh, built under the prior townhouse code. Um, again, not, not, not to take away from anybody that was involved in these projects. It's just to, to show what, you know, how far we've come, uh, in terms of walkability, uh, and, and design. Next slide. Uh, so this is a project that's, uh, wrapping up under construction. This is behind the Planet Fitness on, uh, on Lorraine. Um, this is Kuiper Court, West Thirty-first Place or West Thirty-fourth Place. Um, these are townhouses developed under the townhouse code. These are, uh, two-story units. Um, you can see the, the, all the features that are built into the townhouse code, um, the glazing that's required, the stoops, patio spaces, um, on the side street, you can see that there's glazing requirements there. I think, uh, Lillian had comments about Wes's project, um, adding some additional windows, uh, to when Wes and I were working on. On that project, we, we added additional windows, um, there to meet the townhouse code. So, um, I, I think the code does a good job of, of, of doing a lot of the baseline things. Um, and I think this project turned out fantastic. Uh, next slide. Um, I didn't have, I was a little bit pressed for time this week, so I wasn't able to run out and get, uh, photos of everything. But these are some run bearings of some other projects that have been approved under the townhouse code. These are over on East One Hundred and Twentieth at Haff Berry. Um, this is a Kenez project. You can see that, uh, these are also two stories, more traditional, uh, in nature, uh, their architecture, um, but requiring those, you know, those frontage features, lots of glazing, uh, doors facing the street, parking behind, um, anywhere where there's a curb cut, um, there's, uh, there's screening requirements for any garages that may be visible from there. We're gonna talk about maybe even enhancing that. Um, next slide. Uh, this is another kind of more modern townhouse, uh, development. This is on Forty-Eighth Street. Um, these are the Forest City Shuffleboard units. Um, uh, three stories here, uh, a little, uh, porch, uh, not porches. I guess these are, uh, as a frontage feature, we considered these stoops, um, but lots of glazing. Um, and I, and I think if you see these in person, uh, they turned out really nice. Um, uh, so, uh, next slide. Uh, this is the thing that I'm, I'm, I think I'm most proud of with the code. Um, it, under the prior code, uh, this is the zoning adjudication that you would get if you were to get a, a, a review back from building and housing. So, um, for me, as a, as a planner, uh, I, I can read and understand these things. They're not the clearest, uh, it's not the clearest wording, but, but I can do it. But for residents or, um, maybe people who aren't familiar, uh, as familiar with the code or zoning in general, um, this can be a lot to take in, you know, uh, how, like, how do you read and understand these things if you're, if you're not fully versed in them? Um, so what the new code has done, if you go to the next slide, is taken all of that and it's, it's in chart form now. So we have all of the requirements. We have the different RA districts. Uh, we have a column for what's been, we have, you have columns for what's required. We have a column, uh, that tells you what's being proposed in the plan and then comments about that. Um, so if you're, if you're meeting the requirement, um, it's clear, we, we mark it in green that you're code compliant. Uh, if you're not, we tell you when the proposed, you know, what's required and what you're providing. Um, and then we tell you that you're non-compliant. Maybe sometimes, um, there's things in here that, uh, that just get left off of drawings. We have a category that lets you know, hey, you need to add this to your drawings, otherwise we can't review it. Um, and so when a developer or an architect looks at this review, I think it's really easy for them to go through it and understand, you know, exactly what they need to change or ask for variants for. Again, no one's done that yet, but, um, and then when these projects go to block clubs or anywhere else where the public, um, is looking at them, uh, you know, it's really easy to understand what the requirements are and if the developers meeting or not meeting those requirements. So, um, to me, this has really democratized the use and, and, uh, distribution of information about townhouses in Cleveland. Next slide. So this is the first new definition that we'd like to add. Um, this has come up, uh, a, a couple of times, enough times that it's, uh, I, I think worth adding to the code. So we're gonna add hopefully a definition that's, uh, townhouse project. And this is, um, for a, a unified proposal, so it's unified as in here is one set of plans. The architecture is, is, you know, almost completely the same across whatever the townhouse, um, project might be. But it would allow for some amount of detached, single-family houses to be also reviewed under the townhouse code. And the reason that we do that is because we'll get a unified plan where, again, the architecture and the, and the proposal is all coming to us as one. But maybe the site has, you know, kind of a weird angle to it, or, 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 uh, maybe it's, you can't because of a building code reason, or you want to add extra windows. You wouldn't want to attach, you know, another unit to a main building, a townhouse building, uh, which is a definition in the code. Um, and so you end up with a, with one or two, uh, single-family detached units that are part of the whole proposal. And so it wouldn't make sense, at least in my view, to review those under any other zoning categories. Like, if we're going to look at and review a set of townhouses, that's all kind of is one project, um, and, and approve of them. And we're gonna take these one or two, uh, single-family detached units and kick them into a totally different process. Um, to me, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do because it is one unified plan. Um, and so the reason that we chose one-third is because the most common, uh, the count, I guess we've seen of these is you would have two townhouses, so one building with, you know, a party wall and then one behind it. So, um, that would be one-third, so it wouldn't exceed one-third of the total count there. So if you go to the next slide, I can show you what that looks like. So this was a proposal, these, these darker units on the left-hand side there that you're looking at. Um, there were two buildings of two units and then a single detached unit, uh, on Follett Court. So these came to us, not the rest of them, just the ones that are darker, came to us as one unified development proposal that had a single-family house as part of it. The architecture of that single-family house is exactly the same as the rest of the townhouses. Um, and it has been the case, the building and housing has been looking at that, um, as a, as a townhouse, um, because it's townhouse in form, uh, even though it's not townhouse in definition. Um, and so if you go to the, the next slide, you can kind of see that all of this works together. So to kick that single-family unit into a totally separate process, um, at least in my mind, doesn't, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. You might end up with a totally different outcome on that single unit than you would on the other four units. Um, if you go to the next slide. Uh, here's another development proposal. Um, so, uh, this is on West Fifty-Eighth Street. You have two units, uh, in the front. You have three units, uh, in the middle, and then you have like this little extra space in the back where you can get an additional unit. Um, but it is a single-family detached unit, so this would meet the, the, uh, the definition of a unified development proposal that does have a single-family unit on it, um, but it does not exceed one-third of the total amount of units. So if you go to the next slide, you can look at the architecture on that and kind of see, you know, would it make sense to kick a single-family house that looks exactly like this into a totally separate process? In my opinion, it would not. So that's the, uh, that's the first definition. Um, you wanna keep going? Um, second definition that we'd like to add is a definition for auto court. Um, so this is that space that's in the, in the, in the, uh, diagram below that's all in gray. So it's an internal alley for a townhouse project, which is defined in the code, allowing vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle access from a public right-of-way to private garages. Uh, so that's, I mean, we, we looked at a bunch of different, uh, definitions of auto courts from across, you know, other, um, cities' codes. Uh, and we kind of mixed and matched some of the language, uh, but tried to keep it as simple as possible, um, and came up with this, which I, I think does a good job, uh, always open to suggestions. Um, uh, but this is the one we're proposing today. Uh, next slide. Uh, so here's another one. Um, so again, it's the same idea, um, you know, just that, that everything in gray there is, is what we're defining as auto court. Next slide. Um, and, and with that new definition, we're then able to add some regulations to go along with it. Um, so the first thing we'd like to do is add some landscaping requirements, uh, for those auto courts. Uh, so what we're proposing here is that twenty-five square feet of dedicated landscape area for every thirty for every thirty-two linear feet of garage door or garage entry that's visible from the public right-of-way. And we would not include alleys in that requirement. So this is, I think, important. I, I, I had some pretty long discussions with Jennifer Kip, who's a city arborist, about whether we could require trees in the auto courts. I think trees do a great job of making those pedestrian, or those auto courts feel, you know, very lived in and, and it makes them pleasant to walk in. But be, because of the realities of how those tree pits have to work, it, it didn't seem, we couldn't find a reasonable way to require them. So we did back that off and just talked about a landscaping square footage. If you go to the next slide, I'll show you how we're going to work that. So what we've decided to do is that if the public right-of-way, the public right-of-ways up there on the left, if we can draw a direct line from the public right-of-way to the garage door, we're going to count that as, as a linear foot that's counted towards the thirty-two of thirty-two feet of linear foot for the garage door. If we cannot draw a direct line from that right-of-way to, to the door, then, then we will not count that door. So those two green bars you're seeing there, those are garage doors that would not be counted toward that metric. So in this, in this example, there are seven sixteen-foot garage doors, so that's a hundred and twelve linear feet. You divide that by thirty-two, you get three point five. And just like we round up, for parking spaces, we would round that up from three point five to a whole number, which is four, and divide that, and you get a hundred square feet of landscaping. So in this auto court would be required a hundred square feet of landscaping. And, and that's up to the developer and the architect about how they want to break that up, where they want to put it. They don't have to do them in twenty-five-foot block, twenty-five square foot blocks. They can, they can arrange it any way that they need to in order to make the driveway beautiful and efficient. But, but adding some green space in these auto courts, when they're visible from the street, has been something that we've heard over and over again is, is something that's wanted. And honestly, I think it would, would make the townhouse code stronger. So next slide, please. Just some examples on the left side, some Cleveland examples of auto courts. Again, not picking on any of these developers or anyone involved in these projects. These are, you know, these are just existing projects that don't have any landscaping in them. And then on the right-hand side, that top slide is probably one of the most beautiful auto courts I've seen. It's a project in Chicago. There's a, there's a, a one, an example on the bottom left with the landscaping that's from Cleveland. And then on the right, another Chicago example, just how beautiful those auto courts can be. Next slide.
One is large mirror.
Correct. A second regulation we'd like to add to the auto courts is that if you have any wholer portion of an auto court with those garage doors visible, not including the alleys, of course, at least sixty percent of that surface area needs to be paved with a human-scale material. Human-scale material is defined in the code already. And just some examples of what that can look like. I think, you know, having something other than asphalt or concrete as the, the primary paving material can really enhance these. And again, these are, these are for the people that live in these units, but it is only regulated for units that have direct visibility from the street. So it's, it's for the units. I think it always makes them better. But it's really to make sure that when people are peeking into these places as they're walking their dog or going for a bike ride, that they're, that they're beautiful spaces. Next slide. And then when you add all, all those, those things and you put them all together, you know, this is what it can look like. I think this is a fantastic example of how all these things can work together, landscaping. You know, there's bikes here, there's pedestrians here, there's a car right in the middle of everything. So these can be great spaces and we, we think that some of these regulations will help us get to auto courts that are more like this. Next slide. And so this is the one I think that everyone is probably the most interested in, at least maybe the commission members. So just to be very clear, townhouses are not permitted by right in a single or two-family district. They have to come to the planning commission today for that approval. Every single townhouse that's built in the city of Cleveland goes through a design review process, whether that's HD RS or a local committee or, or landmarks. The zoning code does not regulate architectural style. It's just not something it does. And the zoning code cannot mandate good architecture. Whatever your definition of good architecture is, you know, that's, that's your definition. It's not in the code. So here's the existing approval process. I know there's been some questions about this and honestly, it's not straightforward. It just, it just isn't because of all the different choose-your-own-adventures you can go on. But in a single or two-family district right now, the, the city planning commission is required to approve these. In the multifamily are less restrictive. They are permitted by right. If you've got less than five units and you're not in a landmarks district, you'll go through an HD RS project. The director can sign off on that and you can get your building permit if it's approved. If the GRS denies it, the director can either sign off on it or the director can send that to planning commission for, for, for their weigh-in. And then if you have more than five units in your, in a landmarks district, you know, you go through, or you're in a, a review district, I'm sorry. You go to your designer view or landmarks committee, you can get an approval there, then you get your approval. It's TPC or landmarks. And then you can get your building permit. If you're denied, it'd go through a similar process where, you know, the final, if everyone denies it, you end up at common pleas. Next slide. So this is the language that's in the code today that talks, that tells the planning commission what they're supposed to look at if they're going to approve a set of townhouses in a single or two-family district. And understandably, it, it's a little bit wordy. It's, it's, it's fuzzy. We've heard that comment over and over again and, and we agree with you on that. So, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna try to make it as simple as possible as we can. So the first thing we're gonna do is today, if a project is in a landmarks district, they need to get all of their design approvals from the landmarks process. So local landmarks and then, and then the full landmarks commission. Additionally, they need to get a use approval from the planning commission. That's, that's caused some issues in the past. So what we'd like to do is just, is streamline that. If you're getting your design approval from the planning commission, you're going to get your use approval from the planning commission. If you're getting your dot design approval from the landmarks commission, you're going to get your use approval from the landmarks commission. Just, we'll just, we'll stop trying to mix those two commissions in that way. Next slide. And we're going to streamline that, that big hunk of text that we showed you two slides ago into this. So when a townhouse is in a single or two-family district, you need to get your approval from either the landmarks commission or the planning commission. And so the language that we're going to change is this stuff in red. So when you're in the single or two-family district, the applicable designer view body, i.e. city planning commission or landmarks, shall determine based on the application of subsection one of Division E, same division, same subsection as before, of this section, if a townhouse code, uh, townhouse use shall be permitted. So subsection one, E one, so building envelope and placement. These are the things that the planning commission or the landmarks commission is going to look at when they're determining whether the use in a single or two-family district is, should be approved or denied. We want you to look at the height. We want you to look at the front yard setback, the roof form and the frontage feature. These are the things that we believe most, are most important to setting these buildings up for compatibility in no matter what context they're in. So the height district, let's talk about that for a second. If a height district of one is where you're building your townhouses, the total height permitted there by, by code is thirty-five feet. However, the planning commission here has the authority to say twenty-five feet is the appropriate height. Thirty-two feet is the appropriate height. That is, that is what you do in order to grant these things permission to be built. The front yard setback, if you're in an RA three district, you can go up to the lot line, so a zero-foot front yard setback in the code. However, the planning commission here is given the authority to say nine feet is the correct setback or two feet is the correct setback. That's, that is within the planning commission's authority. Same thing with roof form and same thing with frontage feature. Next slide. So talking about height, this is a couple, this is an example I like from Pittsburgh. These are three-story units. They are nearly zero lot line. But their height, when you're walking past them, you know, you don't really feel that, that third story as much. So you can play around with the height, you know, the planning commission has the authority, if, if the changes are made, to, to push for something like this or, or any other configuration of height that they think is appropriate. Next slide. Front yard setback. So these are three-story units. These have about a ten-foot setback from the sidewalk. But just as easily, they could have had a two-foot or a, a, a zero-foot setback. Planning commission would have the ability to push and pull within those parameters of the, of the use of the category RA one, two or three. Next slide. Roof form, again, just the roof form can be altered, you know, to, to push or pull the height of this building up or down. I think this one does a good job of, of kind of showing how those can make the building feel. Next slide. And this is one of my favorite projects. This is in Ohio City. This is, this is a rehab. But the planning commission, if the changes are made with the ability to say, well, front porches are really the predominant frontage feature on the street, we'd like to have, you know, full front porches. Maybe in a different context, you know, they want to have stoops or, or, or a courtyard, anything like that. Anything that's in the frontage feature, cat, bucket, bucket list in the code, they could choose from. So just, just, you know, so there's the ability to add compatibility by changing these four things, we think is, is, we think we can, we can use those four things to make sure that the compatibility for these townhouses can fit across the wide variety of districts. Next slide. And then muse units. Some people like, like to call them slot houses. I, I, I don't know if I agree with that. Actually, I'm sure I don't. So these, these slot houses or muse units, they can be really beautiful places. I'm using it as just simply a, a unit that doesn't have a frontage directly on a public right-of-way. It's on a private frontage. The townhouse code would describe it. These are a, a set of historic ones in Ohio City. This, this space is really cared for. It's loved. They've added some lights over this space. I see people walking down here all the time. We know that these places can be cool. They don't have to be, you know, pedestrian, you know, cattle shoots. So, but again, all of that stuff falls to the designer view bodies to ensure that these places are beautiful if the developer doesn't propose them out of the, out of the box. So I think that's the last slide, Maurice. Yep, those are, those are all of them. Those are the proposed changes. Thanks for taking the time to hear this today and open to take any questions or comments.
Miss Members, questions?
We have Khalid with his hand raised. Lillian has asked a few questions in the text in the chat during the presentation as well.
Pardon me?
Lillian has added some, has asked some questions in the chat feature.
Is Lillian still on the phone? Yeah, I'm still here. The first one was, can you add something specific for me that? I mean, my biggest issue with the auto courts is that we've seen many units that can go plan that you showed doesn't have doors on the auto court. And is solely for cars. So can we require, so people are really entering through garages and not having any front doors? So that for me is one of the biggest things that needs to be clearly stated, that we're not going to allow that. And then the point you make about the auto court, I also would like to see another requirement that if you're not able to have walkways in the auto court, then you must have a different, a differentiation of material other than just concrete. So to be very specific of a few of the biggest, what I call barriers or issues we've had, those are two for me that really stand out and need to be stated clearly so that it's, you know, then it would come back and say we can't afford anything other than concrete and we don't have room for walkways and we don't have doors. So I, I think you have to say those clearly in this new thing. And then the second Matt answered, but from a process point of view, I don't want to see any more site plans only coming that, you know, office has always pointed out that we're forced to make zoning change to townhouse before we've seen enough to actually do it. So we should just clearly state that too, which is, he answered that you would. But for me, those were like some of the big pain points that I've had with this.
Can I ask a question, Lillian?
Yep.
So you're asking for man doors in the auto courts. So the way that the code is set up is that you can have your primary pedestrian entrance in the same plane as the garage door if you're not facing a, a, a primary street. But a lot of times what happens is that the developer will propose a site plan that has the garages as their, the auto court is its own thing, and then on the other side, it'll have the muse units with the doors there. So are you asking?
The Glendale one in your plan, in your presentation, go back to the Glendale example.
Maurice, that was near the top. That was.
This example, we saw one in Ohio City that was really terrible, that was almost exactly like it, which is, was for me, a real equity problem as well. Keep going. Right there.
Right there. That was it.
So now that. So the units on the auto court.
Yep, that one.
The back units did not have doors on the auto court. And the only way you entered was through a tiny walk along the railroad tracks that was very unsafe and they had no front address. So I do not, I want this problem to be eliminated because we saw multiple examples of this. So if you live in one of the back units, you have a real safety issue and no front door and only garage doors on the auto court. So I want to specifically find some way to state this is not, you're not allowed to do this. Unless there's a street through alley on the other side. This is right up against the railroad tracks.
Is, is that the issue that it's against the railroad tracks? That this was another, there was another condition on the side, on the other side of this?
Street or something that was more like you weren't in a safety situation, right? This really caused, like, imagine if you call Uber to deliver your food to this acre, right? You, there are no, no front doors in the alley and, you know, it, it's just not a great situation. We saw this exact problem in an Ohio City project as well. This, the units should actually have doors in the auto court, like you showed in most of your examples. And we should require walkways.
I have to leave. I'm sorry if I'm stepping on anyone's toes. Great job, Kyle. This was clear. I'm offering my house for you to come to and I'll walk you through it. There are four units. We have private courtyards and there's green space and service berries and gates. So it's not actually a door, but that, that, that's an example where it really worked well. So just wanted to offer that to you, sir. Gate one two nine Euclid Avenue. You're welcome anytime. Thank you. Peace.
See you, August.
Yeah, can I throw something out there just with respect to specificity? Even with this example, the commission still has the authority and ability to look these various sites and their unique attributes. So even if you have townhouse.
Not true. I tried. I, I voted no against this one. I, they was told that they couldn't make it work because there were so many units to add different unit types on the back and they wouldn't do it, right? So no, we couldn't actually.
Let me, let me, let me.
Actually, this one was strange too.
You said no, but we couldn't. If, if the other commission members were in agreement on that posture, then you absolutely could have voted no on that and it would not have moved forward in the fashion that it did. That's my point. It's just that everyone was not in concurrence with you on that particular matter. My point is, is that it doesn't rob you of the ability to be able to look at the unique attributes of a site. And if there's currents, vote to do something that makes sense for that particular site condition. But of course, you have to have a vote where everyone's on board and in favor. But my point is that specificity that you seek, trying to figure out that language, I think is going to be, that's going to be an interesting task. But I hear you. I think everything that you. But I hear you. I think everything that you said with respect to the the treatments and all of that stuff and that's baked in here. There's another layer you want to take it to. Or another level, for lack of a better word.
Mr. Chairman, we do have several people that would like to speak. We have Khalid first, then Ben Trimble, then Councilman Slyth, and then Matt Moss.
Slyth is a commission member. He gets to go first.
Move to the front of the line.
Okay. So so just just dumb questions in no particular order, probably mostly for Kyle. I guess the first one, if we're able to stay on this, this example, why is it because the market isn't there for it? Is it because it's not the trendy thing or is it a zoning limitation? That no one is bringing like apartment or condo buildings to these locations? Why town? Why is it always townhomes? You know, there's, you go across the city, like you go down Lake Avenue and there's beautiful apartment buildings. And, you know, it's at Moreland Courts in Shaker Square. It it seems like just if it's going to be brand new, it's got to be a townhome and then we're but or a row house, but we're not a row house city by design. So we're constantly trying to put, you know, the the wrong shape peg into the wrong shape hole. And I have more questions kind of to that line, but would would a multi-story condo building be allowed in this location or is that needing a separate zoning code and we end up with townhomes because it's kind of a midpoint between, you know, a single family home and a larger building?
Thanks for the question. I, you know, I think that comes down to each individual developer and and where they're at and what they're comfortable doing on any particular site. We build a lot of single family detached townhouse and apartment buildings, a lot of different kinds of housing in the city. But but as far as why this developer chose this product type here, I'm sure it comes down to dollars and cents.
Yeah, a lot of this, I would tell you, it comes down to dollars and cents and what they can finance. And depending on who the developer is, they can finance different things. But I could build a townhouse a lot cheaper than an apartment building.
So if it comes down to financing, I think something that I need to understand more and we can understand through the legislative processes as we're talking as the city of Cleveland with these financial institutions locally, what do they need to do to help us have the city we want? And I just don't see where we are building. There's never a market for like the four unit apartment buildings like we have all over Cleveland, but they were all built pre-war. And I think that 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 is as good of a density as as many other kinds. And it's just, I I guess the follow-up question, Kyle, is there anything in the code about whether it's the the size of the developable area or the length of the frontage about how many units you can have? Or what size the units need to be? Because it it's again, with this one, you know, it's it 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 seems like to to Lillian's point, you know, this whole back row is just a way to double your to double what you're putting on the site, you know, is, should we have something in place that's saying if there's this much of frontage on Wade Park, that's going to equate out to X number of units? And what we'll find is on the near west side, other places that, you know, in order to have row houses, you can really only have three of them. You can't have 10 of them. And if we want to have larger row house developments in the city of Cleveland, there's plenty of large swaths of vacant land that the market can go find. But we don't need to do everything all in the same three neighborhoods.
Well, the the old townhouse code developed and implemented in 1995 had lots and lots of requirements in it that talked about the floor ratios and the lot sizes and all those types of things. And what we found when we were developing the new townhouse code is that every, every time somebody tried to meet those, they couldn't do it. And they they ended up at Board Zoning Appeals where Board Zoning Appeals would grant those variances anyway. So if the market is asking for townhouses, if the developer, you know, finds that that's the most, the best use of the site. We didn't feel like those regulations, just adding additional paperwork and and time to the projects made much sense to us. I don't know if that fully answers your question, but.
Yeah, as I'll I'll kind of end it here, but as a, as a member of council that doesn't represent one of these hot growth, new development neighborhoods, you know, the thing that I constantly hear from people is, you know, all the money goes to a couple neighborhoods and doesn't go anywhere else. And the truth is that that's, those are private dollars. So it's it's not really the city of Cleveland spending money on on these. It's it's the private market. But what I, you know, we we seem to be caught between this desire for density, but then realizing that the density doesn't always work in these situations and there doesn't seem to be any, you know, we need to come up with a better effort to show that we can push development away from where the strongest markets are and towards those outlying areas and start to do the Richard Papernan moves of where we are. We're building from strength. And that's not that that's not happening, but it's, it's, you know, it's not happening as quickly as we'd all like. And 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 it's, I feel that if if there's a way to resolve that within the townhouse code of saying, you know, these, this is not the, you know, we're never going to be Manhattan. That's not how Cleveland spatially laid out. This isn't a site for this number of homes in this style. You can go for a different style like a building or you can try to do this product elsewhere. That's just, that's just an observation. It just, it just constantly seems like we're trying to do something that doesn't fit. So.
You know, the, I I appreciate all those points. And I think, you know, there's obviously the conversation to have about where density is is best to be located. But the real, the real truth of it is the site plans, if if the commission or or any designer view body doesn't like the site plans, 99% of the time, the reason for that is because these things are laid out to accommodate cars. These could be really awesome, you know, pedestrian oriented, use units with courtyards and all kinds of things, ground floor living, all the things that you want to see to create a really vibrant streetscape and and use area. But unfortunately, the the code requires that there be garages and places to to park your car. And most of the time, the easiest way to do that and to get a a footprint that is livable is to is to build a two-car garage. And so while the the parking requirements are in place and while the demand for, you know, putting your car somewhere on on your own property is is in place, th- this is the, that's, that's where those two things come up against each other.
Well, and I think the financial model has a lot to do with it too. So, you know, if you have a property like this and you spent X for it and now people think housing's, you know, is on fire, so I can charge more money for my land that I wasn't going to do anything with. And then you throw that into the mix and I got to get so many units because it's going to cost me X number of dollars a square foot to build it. And that's the financial model. So they put together a pro forma that shows this kind of drawing. And that's what works. And then when you push back, you know, and I think it's, I think it's up to the commission members, you know, they they have to look at this and say, okay, this is acceptable and this is isn't. And this wasn't the one that got built. Didn't they have to take some of the units off the the Lakeview side?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
I think this was an early iteration of this.
But the principle is the same that is trying to be pointed out. If I can add just really quick, Kyle, if you can go to section E in those modifications, because this speaks to what Lily and I exchange was really about and also speaks to what August had continually brought up in in many of the dialogues that we had. So that's section E with respect to the criteria. The problem was previously that by virtue of approving the appropriateness of a townhome project in a single or two-family district, you almost felt like you were by default approving the design. That was a point of angst. Okay? This is why this language is much more specific, because these items deal with siding and matting. It deals with form. All of the accessories and everything that design would tackle, the commission still has that authority. And that's my point that I was trying to make to Lillian with respect to the appropriateness is determined by these key factors. Because this gets you into the contextual conversation. The detailed design conversation is still very relevant and still have that opportunity. And that specificity, I think, is a lot cleaner with the language that you see here.
No, that's a great point, Freddie. And and, you know, we see some great designers doing some really nice work with the townhouse code.
I'm sorry.
So so I I think it's incumbent upon us to make it easier for the designers that might struggle with a specific site. And, you know, knowing, and this is for staff mostly, knowing what Lillian and and August have to say, if someone wants to slap a bunch of front entrance doors against a a factory wall that's blank, you know, staff can say, hey, that's not going to fly at planning commission. But I still don't want to hurt their creativity, maybe to do something that we haven't seen before. Because that's where we get to the next step in our dwellings is to have someone think differently than we're thinking right now. And I think having some openness, and I think Freddie's right, you know, wh- what's written in front of us that it's just height and it's front yards setback and it's roof forms and it's frontage features, I think that really gives them a lot of movement and design to do something truly unique. So Freddie, it's a good point. So let's move on to the rest of the people out there. Who else wants to make a comment?
Well, they all dropped off.
What do you mean they all dropped off?
They all dropped off. Oh, Khalid's here. Khalid's still here.
Khalid, Khalid, talk to me.
He said he was leaving, so I'm not sure if he's actually there.
Khalid. Khalid.
I was, I'm not really here. I'm on another call. About to drop off. But if there's another chance to comment in the, I think, in the next commission meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, Khalid, if you want to talk to someone too, you can always call me on my cell phone.
Okay. Yeah, because it it's just specific things that are Tremont related. I'm sure Ohio City has their things that they are wanting to address as well. And particular project. And I think overall, we want a fair, you know, we don't, we don't want a cumbersome process, right? Nobody wants that. We just want to make sure we get the outcomes that we desire.
Yeah. And if you, you can always talk to Kyle too, because he'll get it to us or Freddie will get it to us. Or if you want to call us individually direct, that's fine. I always pick up my phone.
Okay, thanks. All right, Dave.
All right, buddy.
Have a good one.
We did have Mr. Trimble, but he seems to have logged off and we do have Matt Moss that's waiting to speak.
Matt, speak to me.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add to to Kyle's presentation and the conversation about auto courts. I think, you know, we saw an example earlier this morning with the Siam lot split where we had a project where we, you know, that could have been a townhouse project with an internal auto court and townhomes surrounding or somehow laid out in that site. And, you know, that's all that I think is an example of a project where we have enough space, physical space to create a really great experience for pedestrians and drivers and anyone visiting that 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 location. And, you know, the Wade Park or the the Lakeview project is a, is another example of a project where there's, there's, I think the physical constraints of the site require a discussion of trade-offs in terms of what experiences are then being created versus density. And so I think we have projects, we've seen projects in Ohio City specifically and and also in Tremont where there's a trade-off between getting a certain number of units or maximizing the number of units, which has financial benefit to the developer, of course, and also benefit to the city in terms of adding more people and more residences. And I think figuring out how we can dial in that trade-off is, the code is always going to be a challenge. And I think that that's at some level always going to be incumbent upon our designer view process to make sure that that is being done in the appropriate context and also in the right way. And I think we should have, I think, more direct conversations with developers, with architects and at the designing meetings when that trade-off is being done appropriately. If if a site like the the one we saw in the presentation, for example, if it's a choice between maximizing units or doing fewer units, but then creating a shared space, what is the benefit that we should strive for in that in that example and how can that best be balanced?
Right. Good point. Anyone else? I'm hungry. Let's go to lunch. Freddie, do you got a director's report?
There's a couple of items, but I don't think the whole commission is here to hear it. So I would like to. So there's several things that I do want to bring up that are very important that's coming up. We have two major planning initiatives that will need to be adopted by the planning commission. Now, these initiatives are going to be requested to be special meetings in the actual locations as to where these plans occur. So there's the Vision for the Valley, which we're seeking to do actually in the River Valley at a location that we're working to define a socially distant meeting out in the actual community. And then we're also going to be looking to do the same thing for the Clark Fulton Mass Plan, which is a very large neighborhood level comprehensive plan. And we're going to be working on locations for those. And and the desire is to have the commission meetings for those out there in those geographies. And we're going to be looking to devote the majority of the meeting to those particular initiatives because they are very comprehensive and large in scale. The other thing I want to provide an update on and make a request for is two things at one of our next meetings is to provide an update on all of our 2021 initiatives so that the planning commission is aware of staff's activities for this year. And many of you may have gotten an opportunity to attend the symposium. There was a pretty decent article written today about the symposium. And we believe that it was a very productive and intense few days with those who participated. So we appreciate everyone of the commission members who partook in the activities Tuesday and Wednesday.
Hey, Freddie, who wrote the article?
It was a leavelet article, Cleveland.com.
I'll look it up.
And we have Michelle Yarbo, who was actually on the phone and was one of our moderators. I'm sorry, Diane. I'm sorry, Ms. Dolly.
No, I just was wondering what the estimated time period or date is for those two special presentations? Is it in April or next week or what?
It's April. It's April. So we're looking at the first meeting in April for the Vision for the Valley. And then the next meeting either in late April for the Clark Fulton one. We're still working out the details for the Clark Fulton piece, but we definitely are looking to adopt the Vision for the Valley initiative in April and preferably that first week. And we've already made some arrangements with the venue to look at that.
Okay, so after that first full weekend in April after Easter, right?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Freddie.
So I got, Mr. Chair.
Freddie, I just want to tell you, you did a beautiful job. You you really added to that symposium.
Appreciate that. And I just want to thank Councilman Slyth, Frank Attelli, and the city council members who actually participated in that. I think the conversations were very rich. Because I believe in part you were hearing from people who do a lot of work. And I think that was really good. And I did want to give a shout out to Michelle Yarbo, who's actually on this call for moderating. And I attended her breakout session or her panel session and it were really good conversations. I don't know if you want to comment at all, Michelle.
Michelle?
She's on.
I just sent a message in the chat. Hi, it was a pleasure to participate. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
All right. If that's it, we're adjourned. All right, if that's it, we're adjourned.
Yep. All right. Thanks, Kyle. Good job, Kyle.
Bye-bye. Have a great weekend.
Bye, everyone.